So you've got to get in the red.
Yes. But it's not that hard to get in a room, I'll just tell you that. And there's Bethany.
Okay. We should.
All right. All right, welcome, everybody. I'm going to take over for chairman until he shows up. He will be here shortly. And we have hopefully brought your budget book with you. I don't know if anybody brought that up. There's a schedule in the front. Today we have managers comments. County counselor, I division of technology, public works and MAPD and culture and rec. And if we everything goes according to plan, we'll be done about four thirty today. We'll see how that goes. And so first up right now is manager's comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair, and good afternoon commissioners and anyone zooming. So today is the kickoff of the B O C C. Budget hearings and we have a schedule for the week. Let me back up and kind of just talk about how we got here today. So the staff this year. With the way the forecast looked last August and September, the staff actually got together. Several times in the fall and talked about budget and things that we talk about every. October, November and December. How can we be more efficient? How can we? How can we collapse services? How can we provide better services? And we had several robust discussions. The the commission gets involved in February when we had our retreat. At exploration place and we had good discussion that day and from that spawned a couple of workshops, one of which we've already had. In April, the budget team. And I met with departments and division and elected offices and have them run through basically what they're going to present during this hearing. Made some adjustments and cleanup. And even went in and looked. We have decision packages galore this year and we went through and made some strategic cuts on decision packages. And you're still going to hear as the commission several million dollars of asks for decision packages. But after the manager and finance meeting, we went in and tried to clean that up as best we could. There are some things we intentionally want you to hear. Knowing that they may or may not make the final budget, we think it's important that the commission hear what some of these departments have to say. That brings us now to to May. This is your time. This is the commission time and the public's time to get a first blush at what some of the departments and divisions are bringing forward. On July 12th, and I want to talk about this date in just a minute, but on July 12th, I am scheduled to give you the staff recommended budget. It will be, I assure you, a responsible budget, one that. In no way harms the county financially yet tries to get us the best service we can provide to the community. This date may change. We've come to know this last week that there is a city to city trip. That is the 12th through the 14th that two or more commissioners may go to. If that's the case. I'm going to ask finance to move this meeting to July 11 in the afternoon. And we will have that that hearing on that particular day. More to come on that. I just put. The July 12th as an asterisk on your calendar to be aware of that. There's some conflict that has arisen. August 2nd is our evening public meeting and August 23rd is our public meeting with budget adoption. The importance of the budget, I say every year, this is one of the most important things we all do is probably the most important thing that commissioners do. It is. The budget gives spending authority for a given year when the year we're talking about here is 2024. It helps flesh out goals and priorities of this commission and you represent the people. And the commission speak to these priorities through allocated budget. It is. It is not only get over dramatic here, but it is the soul of the county. How we spend our money, where we put our resources talks a lot about this organization. And about how you as a commission decide to steer us. The budget presentations that you will hear over the next few days. They're we're going to come back and have each department and division talk about and give you an update of their workforce strength. That's something new. We tried last year because. We had so many position openings that we felt it important at the commission. Have a good breath on that. And the same way this year, we'll give you staffing reports, some of which are better. Some of which have stayed the same. I don't think anything gotten worse, thankfully, but. There has been some improvement. We think you should. You should know. They will each talk about strategic goals which are tied to our overall strategic plan. And they will talk about main performance concerns that their specific department or division is addressing. They will talk about challenges and opportunities. They will have a summary of funds, slide one, single fund slide. And then they will talk about any decision, alternative, reduction or revenue package that they see in their department division. So we've got them on a. A good tight timeline. We want to keep our discussion focused on budget. So that's what you can expect from each presenter as as we go forward. We start the way we start every year with Lindsay giving us an update on this kind of overall. Issues with economy, what some of the stresses are. And she will also give an update on our financial forecast and Lauren is here for technical expertise as we drill into the. To the budgets and we have hearings, Lauren becomes the go to person for questions from the commissioner regarding budget. So with that, Lindsay, take us away.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. Try not to put you to sleep, but we do have, you'll see a pretty thick packet of information. So what we're going to go through at the beginning is a lot of information that you've seen in the past. But we are talking about so many things right now, so many priorities for the county and for the community. That it made sense for us to try and package all of this and kind of one comprehensive story. We will move through the first few slides pretty quickly. I have highlighted in some bright colors. The points I want to emphasize. So the rest I will leave to you to read. Once we get through that, we'll talk about some of the statistics. We've seen the same information before, how how we fare economically, and then we will get into the meat of the forecast. And so Lauren is also going to be our technical expert on the details within the financial forecast. I just get to be the person who talks about it. So at the end, we'll talk about the budget calendar, make sure we have a clear understanding on expectations from you all about how we're going to engage the public. And then we'll also quickly go through the binder, just so you can remember what information is available to you here. So. With that, we will just, oh, I already did my first slide. There you go. Here's what we're going to cover today. Next. So slide three here. Again, I mentioned that the points I want to talk about and spend some time on. Are those that focus on either what the pay pool was in that year because compensation continues to be such a large theme for us. Or it focuses on what the budget situation was for that year. So just as a refresher, 2008, that's when we saw the increase in our mill levy rate. We increased that or the commission increased that at the time for two reasons, the construction of NCAT as well as the expansion of the jail. Well, the CJCC, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council was stood up, initiated a bunch of programs. And that jail expansion was able to be put off. And so you can see in the following years that the mill levy rate was reduced. And so by the time we get to 2012. You can see that we're basically down the mill levy rate where we sit at still today. So in 2012, that was when the recession was really hitting us hard. If you remember our February forecast presentation, Lauren always shows you the slide that talks about the value of the forecast. Why we do it, why we make you listen to it so much. It's because it was giving us the warning signs. That we were on a path to become financially insolvent, not just fall below our minimum fund balance, but actually be broke, not able to pay our bills. So with that in mind, the commission at that time embarked on a two year, actually two and a half year plan to reduce the budget. So you can see that in 2012, we didn't have any employee pay adjustment. And we did recurring reductions totaling $10.3 million with a lot of position cuts. In 2013 was the first year of the flat budget. So after we went through and did those across the board reductions, we implemented a flat budget target for every department. Except for personnel adjustments that were done across the board or strategic requests that came before the commission. No adjustments were ever made to the budget. There were no costs of doing business built in, nothing like that. So you can see in 2014, we had a two and a half percent performance based pool. One thing that I want to emphasize in this bullet, which is new information you've never seen before in in this particular presentation. Is that second line. Can the county did a first ever green study back in 2013 to 2014. At that time, we were already 6.7% behind market on average. Our financial condition was still iffy. Things were not rebounding as quickly. This, I mean, I think we all know the recession recovery for this one was unlike any we've ever seen before. And so we actually only did on average about 1.26% pay adjustments out of that. Evergreen study. There were a handful of positions that were adjusted in terms of classification and those positions were brought to their new minimums. But otherwise, that was when we first kind of acknowledged that there was a personnel issue, a compensation issue, but we just didn't have the resources to address that. So as we move to. Our kind of more recent history. 2015, again, two and a half percent performance based pool. And it probably behooves me to stop here and just talk about a performance based pool, just because it was two and a half percent doesn't mean everybody got two and a half percent. We all used a model that basically allowed you to score folks generally one to four, one to five. If you were a two, meaning you met basic expectations, you would get a lower amount. If you were three, meaning you exceeded expectations, you would get a little more. And then if you were outstanding and you were four, you got the highest amount. So if departments did that with fidelity, then what you would see is really really meaningful differences between those groups. A lot of departments didn't do that, which is kind of a lot of the reason why performance based pay fell away. But at the time, the focus was performance based. We weren't so much concerned about the compression that that created. So this has created. Some issues that we're still trying, I think, to come back from today. So in 2016, there were a lot, a lot. Of changes that happened through that budget process. We shifted away from debt funding for roads and bridges. We had a target mill levy rate resolution. We had some changes to our debt policy. And so the budget left quite a bit different after that 2016 year, but we did still maintain a flat budget. So getting into 2017 budget year. Again, we're still in a performance based pay pool. We've got funds to address compression. We know the FLSA changed overtime rules on us, which was something that was imposed upon us. And so because of that. So because of that, a lot of the compensation dollars that otherwise may have been available to try and fix things were instead invested in that FLSA correction. Again, we had a flat budget and you can see that we started to make some changes. From what 2016 had done, we re instituted some of those things. And then if there's ever any interest, we can certainly talk about the WSU tech funding, but that was another big change in the way the county and WSU work together at that time. Oh, and I do want to go back for one thing. You can also see in 2018, that was the first year of the state property tax lead. So that property tax lead doesn't exist anymore. It's been replaced by the revenue neutral rate and we'll get into that in some detail later as well. So because these are more recent budget years, there's a little more data for 2019 and 2020. That I would point out, you can still see our pay adjustments are hovering in the two to two and a half percent range. And you can still see the red flat budget. So when we get to 2020, of course, there's the italicized portion there. We had all of the very best intentions through in 2019 as we adopted 2020 budget. To set aside some funds to do, start doing some targeted strategic pay adjustments for those areas of the organization that had. The greatest disparity in the market. Unfortunately, COVID came in March of 2020, those strategic adjustments were suspended. And in lieu of doing that, we actually did $300 one time. Year in bonuses to most county employees. Of course, that same year, we were also going through furloughs. Some were voluntary, some were not just because of the shifts in the workload. And then, of course, we also tried to do the COVID stipends. For those folks who were on the front line right at the beginning of the pandemic, when we thought it would only last a month or so. Weren't we so cute and naive back then? We did receive carers money, which helped us tremendously. But we did use a significant chunk of those dollars to also do, if you remember, the the federal government mandated that there's the family first coronavirus relief act. We had to provide leave to certain employees. Because of COVID. And child care impact in those things. I went the wrong way. Excuse me.
Yes. Will you clarify exactly what you mean when you say flat budget?
So that's where unless the county overall. Had a pay pool, a health insurance change or something like that. Everyone has had a flat contractual commodity and equipment budget, the same amount of dollars year to year to year, unless they have come to you all. And gotten specific approval to change it. And a lot of the that has caused frustration over the years because a lot of those things are perceived to cost of doing business. I think what we try to to respond to with that is everybody in the organization has had costs of doing business increases. Some departments come and make requests for that. Other departments have enough fluctuation in their budget that they're able to manage it. So that's why at that time they were still required to come to you all. So then we get to the 2021 budget adopted in August of 2020. So again, we were at the height of uncertainty at that time. Hearing everything about a recession coming down the road. So there was no employee pay adjustment whatsoever in 2021. It was still a flat budget. We put off a bunch of technology review board requests. There were still some additions that were made though to high priority areas like public safety. And then we also were able to do with. You know, a lot of communication with commissioners, critical pay. For some of the areas of the organization that were especially hurting. Sign on bonus pilot was rolled out at that time. And then, of course, we had our ARPA premium pay never to be spoken of again. But that was able to impact more than 2,000 employees who were on the front line from March of 20 to March of 21 through ARPA. So then we get to 2022, and I just want to note that that it was the 10th year of flat budgets. Again, immediately after across the board cuts. We were able to reclass more than 1,600 positions after those job descriptions were reviewed. But of course, supply chain inflation, workforce issues caused all kinds of havoc in different ways on our budget. You all authorized the adjustment of a number of pay plans listed here at the bottom midyear last year for implementation toward the end of the year. For a lot of departments so that we were able to start gaining some ground. As we come in to 2023, our current year. We're in our 11th year of flat budgets. We continue to have the compensation focus. You all authorize the 8% general pay adjustment. For those employees who. Were not otherwise picked up in one of those specialized pay plans. We were able to move the minimum on our pay structure by 7% for those groups. Of course, we still have weirdness that we're dealing with with right now in terms of trying to get vehicles. Hearing about those long lag times on ambulances and things and trying to figure out how to be creative. Because we do have an annual budget and how to mitigate those effects on departments. You all did authorize the com care grow your own program to try and address workforce on that front. Of course, we're still in the middle of having EMS. Grow your own program, continue. And we know that we're able to rely on ARPA. For example, the district attorney has told you that he has needs that would exist with or without our. So to some extent, ARPA has saved the general fund some money as we've been able to rely on those. Areas. So that's just a quick recap of where we've been. Now, because we're talking so much about compensation, and there's a couple of slides here that talk about employee impact. So this shows in general. The history of employee paid in back to 2008. That's our favorite year. That's when the great recession came and changed everything for us. Sorry, am I echoing? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, sorry. Oh, somebody's trying to. All right. This also then throws in. CPI, which is our measure of inflation as well as our assessed value, just so you can kind of see how that has looked over time. Now, all of that said, there have been significant improvements. With the last year's efforts toward improving pay. And so this information on the far right side of the slide. Shows the various pay plans that we currently have. So just so you know, the com care AD plan, those are their support positions. Comcare DS are licensed direct service positions. The corrections one plan focuses on the correction worker chain. The corrections to plan folks on focuses on the intensive supervision officer, the ISO chain. So all of those groups, this is their median salary today. So we're not using average because. Median shows us truly where the bulk of our employees are concentrated in terms of their pay. So what we're focused on primarily at this point is the general pay plan. We corrected these others, made some good investments. So our general pay plan median wage is $44,990. So. I was thinking about that this morning and I thought, well, so what? What does that even mean to make $45,000? By on an annual basis. And that's what the bulk of our employees who are on the general pay plan and the bulk of our employees are on the general pay plan. That's what they see. So this morning, I used my good friend Google. To find some statistics from credible sources to kind of help tell that story. So I'm not going to say it's perfect. This is illustrative. That's all it is. So if your 23 median salary is the $44,990. ADP says, based on Kansas rates. Your payroll tax is going to be $735 on a monthly basis. If we look at what the county offers for medical benefits and we look at the basic plan, which is the middle of our road plan. And we look at the two person, that person's going to pay $108 out of their paycheck every month for their health insurance. So that means each month they're taking home roughly $2,900. So then we start thinking about, okay, well, what other, what are they paying for? And of course, this is super generalized, just trying to tell a little bit of that story because. $45,000 doesn't go as far today as it used to, especially after inflation. So this kind of helps tell us what that looks like today. So across the United States, there's an estimate that the average out of pocket medical cost paid by a consumer who has insurance is $139 per month. The average student loan for somebody in Kansas is 230 or 255. I need to put on my glasses clearly. Excuse me for a moment. Okay, the average rent and insurance. So this is if you rent an apartment and pay renters insurance of $11 per month. You'll pay $843. If you've got a mortgage with house insurance, you're actually going to pay 1170 versus that 843. For utilities, water, electric, gas, 165, phone and internet, 199, car payment for a used car, $344. Car insurance, $157, which is a lot. So maybe they're not the best driver. Average grocery bill for two people in Kansas per month is $520. And then I made some assumptions on fuel. I assumed that you were going to fill up twice a month for 15 gallons. That's going to cost you 108 bucks a month. That means you're paying in bills $2,730, which means your discretionary income is $177. That doesn't now, if you're only one person surviving on this one person paycheck. You're only paying $54 for health and benefits and you're only paying $261 for your grocery bill. So that discretionary income goes up to a bit, a little bit north of $500. That you've got per month to spend on entertainment, clothes, anything else that's not listed here. And if you have daycare, the average cost right now in Kansas is $11 per hour. Which actually seems like quite a bargain to me, honestly. But let's say that's 170 hours per month that you're paying for that daycare because you're eight hours at your job plus some travel time. That's going to cost you $1,870 a month. And so if you're one person or one person income. In a household and you start looking at costs like this. It's easy to see why so many of our employees have a second job. And why there's pressure on the county to increase our wages if we want to be able to recruit and retain our folks. So now we're going to transition a little bit and go into yet more slides you're used to seeing. But again, we're telling the whole picture here so that we have the complete backdrop of of what we're facing as we. Go into these conversations that you'll hear over the next week or so. So we know that inflation has increased 34% since 2008. In that same time. We have had a number of our just costs of doing business, just stuff we have to do. Go up well above that. So for example, our property insurance costs have increased 750%. And we know that that's just going to continue up because of what we're hearing about the market and and how. Severe weather is impacting folks. Our IT maintenance costs have increased 239%. Our pension costs again set by the state with absolutely no influence by us, 106%. Inmate medical 77%, health insurance 71% and so on and so forth. And you can see. That those are not insignificant dollar amounts that we're talking about. Now, this is where I get to brag on the county a little bit, although it kind of bites us in the end in terms of paying employees. But in terms of managing expenses and being able to tell citizens how responsible you all have been with your dollars, I don't think anything tells it better than this slide. CPI is at 34%, but our actual expenses that are funded by property tax dollars are only at 21% in that same amount of time. Adopted FTEs in that budget in that time are are up slightly. Now our overtime costs are up significantly. Which shows that there's still continued demand for service, but still. The adopted FTEs that are managing this workload is is flat. Our property tax levy is only at 28%. But thanks to the state. But we're going to talk about it next year. It's on my list for legislative agenda. Property tax reliance last year, actual property tax reliance was 57% versus 51% when the recession first started. I went the wrong way again. Darn it. Sorry, guys. Okay. So in the same time, though, our assessed value has increased 37%. So the value of homes. The average home value itself has increased 51%. Personal income, so all earnings derived by individuals in this county. Have has increased 44%. Now those stats are always lagging, so we only have through 2021. But still 44% well beyond CPI, well beyond assessed value. So so that can can be a good news story, but. Our property levy has only increased 28%. Our mill levy rate has stayed flat since those reductions after the sheriff's jail was not expanded. And again, a lagging indicator, we're waiting for 2022 audit to be completed, so I can update this, but our price of government has decreased significantly, which again is a measure of revenue coming in, non governmental revenue coming in. Per dollar of personal income in the community. We have operated this whole time, 16 programs on behalf of the state. We have spent 9% more on those programs, but state aid for those programs has decreased 31%. From 39 million to 27 million. So even when we talk percentages, it doesn't even tell the story of how little those dollars are flowing in. We spent 210 million on those state programs. And received 27 million for them last year. That blows my mind. Medicaid revenue, same thing. EMS, for example, we have seen a decrease in that amount of revenue, 19%, $4 million. And you all have stepped up to the plate through ARPA funds to help with the court backlog. As we heard in your OJA discussion last week. You know, the state is very proprietary of their court system. And yet you all are still stepping up and helping their system because of the burden that it imposes on our community. And so you've allocated a significant amount of funds. So when we just look at the taxpayer support, not even including ARPA. Sedgwick County taxpayer support of these state mandated programs are at 35%. And. Here's our good slide. We'll keep in our back pocket for next year. So when we look at the local ad valorem tax reduction in the city county revenue sharing, yes, Commissioner Dennis pointed out, I harped on this for years. And you can see, we actually even underestimate the impact compared to what KAC does. We actually went and looked at what our mill levy rate was at the time that this went away. And we base our our math on that. We also base our math on the caps that were in place at that time. So when we talk about these staggering estimated losses of 65 million or 41 million, it's not even using KAC. Math that takes into account the full picture. We're still trying to be conservative, possibly more so than we should, but at least it gives us a lot less room to be criticized when this goes out publicly. And of course, our friends at the legislature exempted commercial machinery and equipment. As a across the board economic development measure makes good sense. But it's cost us 56 million and the result is. That it's not like the cost of government just automatically went down. Because this stuff isn't taxed anymore. Instead, it had the effect of shifting the burden to residential. And that's where I think we hear so much of the concerns, if I'm correct. And then, of course, in two thousand fourteen, we started the phase out of the mortgage registration fee in place of the per page fee. We talked about that yesterday in your quarterly report. Um, because, I mean, this number is skewed, I'm going to be honest with you. It's a very impactful number on paper, but it's skewed because we did have an astronomical number of mortgage refinancings and things uh because interest rates tanked. And so this number probably would not be nearly as high in a normal year, but it still has had an impact. So that is the backdrop. For now, we go into with your budget process and your forecast. And so I want to be very clear that when we, when we in finance use words, we mean them very specifically. So the financial forecast is what we really think will happen. That's your long sheet, right? It's here's what really happened in the past. It's what we really think will happen with revenues and expenses and capital projects and those things. And so it's what we use to help build a budget for you. The budget itself is a one year plan. That's all the budget is. Sets a spending limit for one year and it makes it so that departments may access those funds and spend the money in um accordance with all of the policies we have set out for them. So why do I say that? Lauren has provided some excellent information for me. This is my favorite stat. I tell you guys any year. And then I think you probably forget it, but it makes my heart feel good. The twenty twenty two revised budget. Oh, we're still on the same slide. I just have it in my notes. Uh, the twenty twenty two revised budget was five hundred twenty seven point four million, five hundred twenty seven million. Actual expenses from that budget? Four hundred forty seven point three million. Eighty million dollars in unspent budget authority. So the budget is a plan. It's a spending limit. That's all it is. That's why we focus so much on the forecast because that tells us what we really think. So in twenty twenty three, you can see across our various funds uh what our budget is. I will just remind you, as we talked about in the quarterly report yesterday, we do have our three funds that have been consolidated into the general fund. All of those have some budget authority in this year to get the cash out of those old funds and into the general fund. We can't just move money around without the budget authority. So that's kind of an artificial figure. It's not really an operating cost. It's just getting that money out. Uh. I don't want to get into the details of the long sheet yet because we're going to do that through the rest of this presentation. Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't bring all of you energy drinks. That was poor form on my part. But I just want to talk through the layout of this. So at the top, you've got your key revenue and expense assumptions. So we give you last year's actuals and then we tell you in our plan how we expect it to look over the next five years in terms of percent change up or down. As we get further down the sheet, you can see that we throw in some of the expenses that we expect to have. So for example, um, technology review board, equipment uh transfers out for any of those specialized things are listed here. Then we'll show you the operating income or deficit by fund. Now, please remember, all deficits are not bad. Some deficits reflect an intentional use of fund balance for one time projects and that is perfectly acceptable under your policy as well as under best practices and what the credit rating agencies tell us. So a deficit in and of itself isn't necessarily bad. Uh, then it also shows you the ending fund balances. So this is where the rubber meets the road. How much cash do we actually have in the bank for this particular fund at the end of calendar year? And is that an acceptable amount, either based on practice, policy, or other things? And I have a feeling we will be talking about those things very soon. Then it shows your mill levy rate by fund. Now that we only have five funds, I encourage you to pay maybe less attention to this than we used to, although I know aging will be one that we focus on. Um, but otherwise, it's going to vary um based on either the level of bond and interest uh that we're doing in a particular year, or if there are special projects where we need to have a one time infusion of cash. And then finally, and this is going to be something we emphasize a few times. We are currently working off of this forecast, the CIP you approved last year. Next Thursday, you are going to hear the new CIP proposal. But you all have not endorsed that. We haven't gotten any feedback from you on that. And so for now, our safest way to do this is to count on last year's CIP that you've already blessed. So that is what is included in your forecast. And I can guarantee you that that part between now and when you have a recommended budget is going to change. So what are all the numbers on here? So let's first talk about what's included in this iteration of the forecast. It's all current services. We haven't made any provisions to add or cut anything at this time. It's just what we think those real costs for those programs will be. And we don't limit ourselves to a flat budget. We include any factors that we think are really going to drive the actual expense. You all heard a compensation proposal from Sheena here a few weeks ago. That has been built into this forecast because it has, because we have heard from enough commissioners that at least there is, we are on the right path. Now, as that gets modified, if it gets modified, we'll make adjustments to the forecast. But based on the latest and greatest information we have, um, it was approved. Well, we're on the right path. I won't say it was approved. Uh, we have to have a vote for that. And we have also included implementing that in the final quarter of this year in the last three or four pay periods. Okay, so there is some adjustment in the twenty twenty three forecast for those changes. We have four percent pay pools in the outer years. We have the current adopted CIP and two million dollar placeholder for projects in twenty eight. And then in terms of additional uses of general fund cash, which when we talk about a general fund cash, you might as well just assume fund balance. Uh, we have COVID response costs that are still being carried forward from twenty twenty one uh that are work still being completed on the first floor traffic court. We still have a radio replacement plan that we're working through. We have the cash that's coming in from the consolidated funds and because technology ain't cheap, but it's worth it. We've got twenty four point four million in the forecast for technology review board across all five years of the actually six years of the forecast because it's this year plus five years into the future. So what's not included? Um, some, some big stuff, uh, some stuff that we still need some decisions from you all on. We don't have any new programs in here. We don't have funding for most of the decision packages unless they're a cost of doing business. We don't have any unbudgeted community or economic development cra- requests. So for example, you all did approve yesterday a uh letter of support for grant for the US Department of Transportation's small community air service development grant. They contemplate having one hundred fifty thousand dollars um in matching funds from the county. You all still need to confirm that that is something you're prepared to do if the grant is awarded. And if so, we'll add it into the forecast. Right now, we do have some unanticipated things built into our contingencies that we forecast, so it probably won't have a big impact. But just be aware that that's not currently specified in the forecast. Unanticipated technology needs. And so this one with Odyssey uh or uh enterprise justice, I guess, is what we call it now, right? So there's nothing in for enterprise justice and what that may look like. And we heard some pretty dire um figures from the DA if he doesn't have a system uh that's configured properly for him when it goes live. So that's not currently included. And then, of course, like I said, you'll be talking a lot more about capital improvements uh in your priorities there in the coming week. And so that's not yet included either. Okay, so let's talk revenues. Because this has been an area where we have seen uh positive changes versus what we had in the forecast before. So assessed value, we are still planning at this time to capture five percent of that growth. That equates to eight point three million dollars in terms of levy. Now, we don't actually plan to collect every one of those dollars. I know it will shock you, but some people don't pay their taxes. Um, and so we don't always plan to get that amount of dollars. So when we look just at that, we actually expect to receive six point four million dollars in additional revenue in next year's forecast.
Just a, just a question of that. So the, the deferred taxes that were collected in later years, almost all of it, not a hundred percent, but nearly all of it. So are you, are you going to add back in the prior years deficient or delayed taxes are coming into? That would be a lot closer to that number when you do that.
So we, that is in the forecast, but so the way that our system works, we have what are called current property taxes. And so that's where this gets picked up. But then we also have, when we're receiving back taxes, delinquent taxes, penalties and interest, we actually have separate lines in the forecast where we're picking those up. We actually had quite a bit of growth in those, the last couple of years. So we've knocked that back down in the forecast to what we expect a a more manageable level to be. So yes, we do plan to eventually re-put.
But I guess my point would be this. The, the, what, the reduction that you're talking about here is elsewhere in the budget from prior years. It was still, it's not exactly.
It is, but it's already been built in. We've already taken that into account in the forecast.
Right, is, you know, I, when you, when you don't understand that, it looks like we're giving up on you know, one fourth of the
We definitely don't give up.
That's not what's going to happen. So I won't be able to get the wrong idea. Thank you.
Okay, so retail sales and use taxes, we can't keep going at the rate we're going. It justifies logic. Um, I think i- in the notes that Lauren had prepared for us yesterday and talking about the quarterly, we noted that there was ten percent growth in the first quarter of from twenty one to twenty two and then seven percent growth on that from twenty two to twenty three. Um, that's just not sustainable uh in the long term. And so we expect to return to more typical levels in twenty twenty four. That's still a considerable growth when you consider the base where we're starting from in twenty twenty three. Motor vehicle taxes have been pretty low. Um, we're hoping to get back to a more typical growth level there with two and a half percent next year. Gaming revenues, what we have seen is basically a plateau and how much we receive each month now after uh Crosswinds has opened. And so we're just counting on continuing to receive those funds, uh, not anything new. So just for your reference, that is one point seven million dollars that we collect per year and we just expect to stay flat there. Special city, county and highway, we expect to get a little bit of growth there. That's about four point nine to five million dollars that we expect to get from the state through the gas taps and then medical charges for service. We expect to be about the same. Uh, if we look at expenses, as we talked about, we do have the pay adjustment that was already talked about of four percent. That equates to six point one million. But we also have the twenty twenty four compensation proposal that's been included. That's a total of ten point nine million, which is four point eight million more than what's already in the forecast. The employer portion of our health insurance, Sheena gave us some good news. Typically, we plan on that to go at five percent per year. It's only going up four percent. Technology review board has four point four million and you can see what cash has currently been included uh for capital projects. But again, we know that will change, so I'm not going to spend any time talking about that. As we look to the outer years of the forecast, you can see that we have already assumed that we will see those caps come into play for the twenty six through twenty eight budget cycles, the four percent assessed value growth. Uh, we, we just are leaping ahead and making some assumptions that the state is going to put that on the ballot next year and it will be passed. So that has already been factored in. We assume a flat melody rate. Uh, we have sales tax growth of three percent per year, which is closer to what we have historically seen. And then you can see we've got the same two and a half percent for motor vehicle and medical service taxes and then the one percent again for highways.
Question on, on things. That four percent, that it, that isn't taken into account, the new construction or any home sales, we could reset those. So yeah, it'll probably end up being something more than four percent.
It probably will, but without having any idea of how that will really look. Um, and knowing that our tax base really anymore is so much residential property. Um. Uh, it may be four point one or four point two, but I'm not counting on any more than that.
Question on revenue assumptions. Do you, did you pick up anywhere the incremental com care? CCBHC revenue?
So that's a really good point, and I apologize for not emphasizing that before. What we're talking about for our financial forecast are just our property tax supported.
Yes.
So what you're talking about actually happens in com care grants.
Makes sense.
So we really don't even
That makes sense.
Do much presentation. So I apologize. Thank you for allowing me to clarify that. Okay, so uh we talked about our revenue assumptions for the outer years. Whoops. But here are uh expense assumptions. So for now, we have a four percent pay pool built into every year. Now that, of course, is going to start to have some differentiation just because of the fact that we have steps now. Um, and so as those change, that could have an overall impact, but for now, we're just leaving the four percent assumption until we can have a full year of data to see how that plays out. We expect a typical five percent and we um adopted CIP that you all approved last year. And then you can see the uses uh for TRB. We already told you the grand total, but this breaks out those totals by year. So here's where the rubber meets the road. Lovely KU chart. Lauren is a K-State fan, so bless her heart for letting me keep these colors. So what you can see here, red is for revenues um and blue is expenditures. And what you can see is an awful lot of very thin gap between the red and the blue. So let's look at it and actually look at what that gap means. So if you look at this chart. I don't have a way to carry the microphone with me. So Nicole, can you still hear me if I move over? Okay. So what you can see for twenty twenty three is nine million dollars. Now, we talked about that yesterday in your quarterly. A very large chunk of that is us moving the money that's coming in, out. Um, and it's, it's the consolidated funds, it's your opioid funds, it's moving the M A B C D money out of the general fund and into its own fund. So this is a scary number, but it's actually not scary to promise, I would tell you. Now, here's the really good news. We still have a lot of stuff we're figuring out with CIP. So I don't want to overstate and count on this right this second. But you may recall that we had a much larger debt that anticipated for next year's budget process. Even including the general pay plan uh that has now been included, that proposal. We're only looking at an operating deficit of three point six million. That's anticipated next year. And the bulk of that is through our current cash funded CIP and ERV. And you can see these other deficits are much more manageable even with a four percent pool. Now, what does this mean? It means we can't get super crazy with adding new things, new programs, new debt that haven't been built into this. But it means that we're starting out in a much more favorable position than we thought, and that is good news. And that is largely because our revenues have increased more than we anticipated. And because our expenses, all of the, the pay adjustments have worked to maintain, we've heard that. But it hasn't quite brought in all of the new people we were hoping for and planning for in that forecast. So our personnel expenses are not as high as we thought they would be. So uh, general fund, budgetary basis fund balance. Again, I'm going to make the same point I made yesterday. We need to see Hope's gap slide that tells us how much of this is actually spendable. But again, fantastic news. Not only are we not going insolvent, we're not falling below our minimum at any point in this forecast.
Can you remind me what is the statute on minimum fund balance?
There is no statute that
What is our?
To be able to cover.
Recommended.
A county policy that says we will maintain twenty percent of our uh budgeted general fund expenses and transfers. But when we actually look at that policy, it talks about a gap basis, generally accepted accounting principles. This is budgetary basis. So within our financials, there's actually a table that shows here all of your assets that are spendable. Here are your assets that aren't your inventories. Here are your liabilities. Here's what's restricted and it can only be used on certain things. And so when we start, start talking about what's actually available to be spent over that twenty percent, we have to go in and look at what's unassigned and and deduct that out. And that's when we can start talking about how much fund balance is really there. We're completing our audit now. So I don't have that figure for you today, but I hope to have it for you within a month. We can't keep it easy. That's why we made it job security for all the finance people. Okay, so now we're going to transition. Okay, so now we're going to transition into what you're going to actually start talking about the next few days. Um, Mike, can I read your table? We're going to actually talk about the B O C C budget hearings. So this is a very important statement. What is in this packet is not the recommended budget. We still have a lot of decisions to make between now and when you get a recommended budget. So for example, the personnel costs that you see in here for twenty twenty four. The general pay plan has been implemented in the forecast, but not in the budget yet because you haven't told us that that's okay. And so what you'll see is a snapshot of what people were making in those positions in February and the new minimums of those jobs. You won't see health insurance adjustments yet. So there's a whole lot of stuff that still gets in here. So don't get too tripped up on any of the personnel lines and any of the presentations you're going to see, at least in terms of budget. So the purpose of these conversations is for you to hear from departments, the most pressing things that they are dealing with. Oh, I see how it is.
And imposing.
It's pretty dang close. There's lots of more slides. You missed all the important stuff. Don't worry, I'll come and spend twice as much time with you, briefing you. Um, so uh, we also still don't have any capital projects built in here. So you'll hear a lot of departments talk about maybe they had a capital improvement budgeted in twenty three. They're not going to also have it budgeted in twenty four, so be prepared for that. Commissioner Beatty, this is your first round of these, so I wanted to just spend a second talking through what awesome information has been prepared for you by the Budget Office in this binder. You've got your schedule, your table of contents. But just behind those is some really great summary information. You have lists of your decision packages across the entire organization, everything you're going to hear, alternative. Nope, still the same. Here we go. Here's our revenue packages. So we have a department that has come to the table with some ideas for how to increase revenue. We have some reduction packages, so opportunities to reduce the budget in a few areas. Then you have technology review board as a summary. You have the calendar as we know it today for the rest of the budget process. Then we get into another really helpful section. The tab is called budget summaries. This shows you by fund. We like to talk about funds around here, right? So this shows you all the funds, tells you their groupings, gives you actual revenues and expenses for last year. The budget, the adopted budget and the revised budget for this year. And then as it stands now, what information is being presented to you through these hearing documents? And as you flip through the summaries, there is similar information broken down either by department, by fund, it has F T E counts, it has all of that nice information for you right here, if you want to kind of get a nice snapshot. The group, the book itself is grouped based on some standards that we received from G F O A. This isn't something we have come up with. We don't group them by who they report to. We group them by the way the community would know to go and look for information about the budget. So in general government, you'll have a tab here. It's got page numbers, it's got the department and some general budget information about what's included in this packet for twenty twenty four by fund. Same thing as you go through for bond and interest, public safety, and so on and so forth. There's actually TRB has its own section at the back. And then we have a lovely tab at the end where if you want to put your presentations, you're welcome to do that and contain it is all in one document. So a lot of work has gone into this from departments in the Budget Office and preparing this for you. It's a great tool, so please use it as you see fit. So what you'll hear through this process is more than five hundred million dollars worth of budget. Decision packages, as Tom said, so these are supplemental requests for new budget authority, ten point eight million dollars. Going to reiterate that ten point eight million dollars, and this is after it has already been pared down by the manager's budget team. We have fifty thousand dollars worth of revenue packages and two hundred thirty eight thousand dollars of ideas for alternative reductions. We are going to do these hearings through one week from today. Tom has what we um probably shouldn't call the drop dead day on June fifteenth. That is the date by which we must know what will go into the county manager's recommended budget. Um, and then that is what will drive also the revenue neutral rate. So it's more important even than ever in the past to have that done. Um, August second and August twenty third are our public hearing dates. For now, that August second date, again, this is built on last year's. We certainly welcome feedback, but right now the plan is to have a one evening public hearing pretty early in the process. And then on actual budget adoption day, the way revenue neutral rate works is you have to have a public hearing on your mill levy rate slash property tax levy. You have to have that hearing, and then the commission must vote at the conclusion of that hearing to either to approve a levy, whatever that may be. And then we actually will take a separate item for you to adopt the overall budget. But it must, it will need to happen on the same day because there's no reason for you to adopt a levy and then not adopt a budget. They're they're pretty much the same thing. Um, between now and then, one of the things we also would like you to consider as we work through this process is if there's anything that you want to deep dive on. So departments will come and speak to you. They have an allotted amount of time. Um, we don't necessarily want to go down too many rabbit holes if we can avoid it in these conversations. Um, if you could just let Tommy or Lorian know that you want a workshop, we'll try to get something scheduled either at a staff meeting or a separate time to do those deep dives. All of this information will be posted out on the website. Um, and like always, we will have an opportunity for the public to engage through our website once the recommended budget is posted. And we'll share that feedback with you. So it's pretty good for starting late. What questions can I answer?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I appreciate it. Oh, thank Lindsey, and I want to thank all of your staff because I know how much effort we put into this each and every year, and I appreciate that. So we started this back in February. And as you showed, we're going to finish this up on the twenty third of August. And during that period of time, the commission have a chance to to receive and deep dive into each and every one of the different departments there. And the T R B and the C I P and everything else that goes into this budget, we'll adopt. The thing that distresses me, and I think is very disrespectful to the process, is when at the last minute on the day that we adopted on twenty three August, that there are surprises that are sent uh by certain commissioners to the entire board that we have nothing, no idea that those are coming up until that day. That's disrespectful to the process. That's disrespectful to our staff. That's disrespectful to the other commissioners. It it concerns me greatly. In addition, the staff has been sworn to silence and they're prohibited to talk to the other commissioners and let them know that we're going to get blindsided. And that's really tragic. Uh, because it puts our staff in a very untenable situation where they work for five commissioners, but they can only talk to one. So I certainly hope that that process does not happen again this year. Because again, it is extremely disrespectful. And it is detrimental to us passing a budget that we all agree with. You can't pop up something on the very last day and for us to make a wise decision on that day. Thank you.
Lindsey, thanks. I apologize to everybody for for being late. So I'll leaf through this and I missed the opening comments by the manager, I think, probably, or not. And then and then your presentation. So thanks.
That's the best ever. I'm sorry.
It was. Good. Thank you, Commissioner Alford. What else? Questions? Yeah. Looks like a a good process for starting. So.
Hey, Lorian, it's all yours.
Oh, Chairman, thank you. I wanted to respond to Commissioner Dennis's uh point. He's clearly talking about me. So let's just let's just state that out front and yeah, I've been I've been elected official since before I was a commissioner. I was in the state legislature for four years, learned learned a great deal. If you've ever watched the legislature debate a budget, they make a lot of changes. They actually have a pay go provision where they can do a cut and then add at the same time, but they're not really allowed to add to the budget at that point. We don't uh in a sense, we have a cap on our spending. When it must be passed the last update, we're essentially capped. So um to add spending at that point would be pretty difficult to do, but there are reasons why I want to have a vote on some things, even if it doesn't pass. I there's things I stand for. We're going to have, we're going to have disagreements in this room. Commissioners are not going to agree. But I have a right to advocate for the things I believe in. And again, and and how I do that, when I do that, I would do my very best to be respectful, but I think to 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 show all the cards uh throughout the entire process, you know, it sounds like, you know, that's the theories that we're going to, we're going to have, we're going to have a fight after fight after fight after fight after fight. And I have no reason to do that. I I think at the end of the day, I'm going to disagree with my colleagues on some things. I'll make my case and I'll advocate for what I believe is right. It may not pass. That's totally fine, but I don't think there's it's not reasonable for us to bring up something we disagree about uh every week. And if you want me to do that, I will. I can do that today. I don't know if we want to do that. I I don't know that it's productive. At the end of the day, before we adopt a budget, I will probably have some adjustments to the budget. And by the way, you're set up to do that. I imagine this has happened every year that counties been uh passing budgets. There's always, there's always adjustments to the budget. And we're designed to do that. There's nothing wrong with bringing up an idea at budget adoption to make some adjustment to the budget. I think there's nothing wrong with doing it that way. And and if 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 everyone perceives that as disrespectful to everybody involved, I'm so sorry, but I don't, I don't agree with that. And I don't think it's uh only way to look at this. So I I just disagree with the the intent that everything has to be done repeatedly early on, and the 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 arguments behind this, we're not going to bring it up again. I don't think I agree with that. Thank you.
Well, and it's always a the end of the day, thanks for explaining, but it is the majority, the the majority of the commission.
Right, right.
I I've watched the legislature now for the last number of years, and I'll guarantee you that the way that they do the job like where it's not something that we ought to aspire to. So if that's the way that we're going to start doing our budgets, then we've got a problem here. But again, taking this entire process through and knowing that you've got something that you want to change in that budget and not telling the rest of the staff and the rest of the commission is absolutely disrespectful. Thank you.
Well, we have a couple of opinions, so.
It will follow, we'll follow up with the body. Yeah, I need us to make sure we have a clear understanding of expectations. Okay, Lorian, now it's you.
We'll be starting with the county councillor's office. We'll be on page sixty nine of your binders, and Justin Wagner is here to present.
I had asked. He said Harold bring my budget.
Yeah, there is. Lindsey.
Commissioners, Justin Wagon and Deputy County Councillor here to present the uh departmental budget report from the County Councillor's Office. Uh, first, I did want to thank Alicia Madison in our office for preparing this and also the work and efforts of Paul Leaker as our uh contacting the budget uh budget analyst for this my item and helping us get through this. And Mike Papun, he may be in here a little bit later, but uh also want to recognize him for his contributions as well. All right, this slide is the County Councillor's Office workforce strength. Um, the really the only thing that I think that's not filled in on this, we do have one vacancy for a support staff position. So that's distributed across a few different portions on this, but other than that, we are fully staffed. This is our organizational chart. I won't go through that in any extreme detail. Uh, going to go through our strategic goals. The first strategic goal from County Councillor's Office is to aggressively represent our clients, which really is Sedgwick County as an organization. So whether it's you all as the Board of County Commissioners, as the the head of the organization, whether it's uh other independent elected officials, appointed officials, county staff, uh those really are our clients. And our office, uh as you can see on this slide, we've handled uh six hundred cases in twenty twenty two, uh thirty nine lawsuits, eighteen employment related claims, five hundred seventeen Board of Tax Appeals cases, uh and a number of other claims and lawsuits uh within our office. Also, we defended nine hundred forty five million dollars of appraised valuation on uh properties. And and then in defending that, we defended eighty seven percent of the valuation that was challenged as well. Also, uh got approximately four hundred eighty eight thousand dollars that we received through bankruptcy claims in those processes, usually properties that are behind on their taxes. Um, our second strategic goal is to provide cost effective legal services. You can see on here that our office in twenty twenty two spent fifteen thousand five hundred seventy eight hours of attorney time uh working on matters for the county. Um, based on our total budget, I would submit that's a very cost effective uh use, especially if you look at the rates that outside counsel and attorneys typically charge. Um, I do think the county is getting a good investment with with our office. Uh, I would move on to our additional details on this point. We um work on a lot of contracts. You guys probably know that. Uh, we added in here uh the total numbers in twenty twenty two or nine hundred and eight total contracts that our office worked and processed through. Of course, every resolution that's on your agenda, nearly every agenda item, our office has input, so we are working on that kind of stuff routinely. Also, in twenty twenty two, there was a lot of time spent by our office, especially Kevin Stamper on ARPA matters. Uh, as our office helped finance staff work through a new new and complex body of federal law that you've all heard a lot about over the last year or two. Also, as you've been aware, we've uh our office has worked on the opioid settlement uh settlements, plural, I should say, under the Kansas Fights Addiction Act, where in that case, we're actually bringing money into the county uh through these settlements, and we anticipate there being future money brought in through those efforts. The third strategic goal is to provide consistent and accurate legal advice based on current legal authorities. Uh, this is, you know, this is stuff we do day in, day out uh for the entire organization. Uh, we track legislation, we help assist the board and county staff on legislative matters, obviously updates to laws. Uh, we also have our attorneys who get training. Uh, we utilize, uh, you know, legal research software to perform our jobs as efficiently as possible. Strategic goal number four is we enforce our county codes through the county court system. There's a specialized set of uh specialized court uh that's kind of a subset of our district court that handles violations of county codes. Uh, we've been doing that for a number of years, and in twenty twenty two, we had two hundred eighty three different county court cases that we prosecuted. We do have a decision package in front of you today. Um, and this decision package, um, it's it's worth pointing out, our office tries to use uh outside external counsel judiciously. Uh, typically, when we either, there's a a claim against the county that may use specialized or extensive amount of legal legal efforts. Sometimes there's conflicts of interest where our office can't represent the county on a given matter. There may be a need to hire external counsel for that reason. Um, but it's worth noting that this decision package, I would submit, it's really a budgetary reality uh that we would need additional funding. It's asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra. And to explain this, um, I mean, one thing that's worth noting is outside council costs have gone up a lot. Usually, you're paying per hour on these attorney fees. And so we looked at the three law firms we've used the most from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three and looked at their hourly rates. Those have gone up by an average of twenty five percent. Um, so that in and of itself is a significant increase. Um, prior to twenty sixteen, our outside council budget had historically been three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we, at that time, uh We, at that time, we ended up modifying our outside council budget down to two hundred thousand dollars to a pretty significant decrease. We, in our budget this year, we proposed already, separate from the decision package, transferring fifty thousand dollars from other areas, whether it be for our subscription services that we have, for our travel. Training that we would do to help cover additional outside council budget, but we are asking for another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think it's worth pointing out the last four years. Our projector, where we've been at on this. We spent two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in two twenty twenty on outside council. We spent two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars in twenty twenty one. We spent five hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars last year. We've already spent two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars this year. The point being that we don't, we anticipate that the that our office would need approximately four hundred thousand dollars. I should say, yeah, be about four hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty four and moving forward approximately that amount. We're not set up to handle large amounts of in-house litigation. We don't have a lot of attorneys who are dedicated specifically to that, because our attorneys and support staff are busy doing other things. And like I said, we'd also have to hire additional support staff, I think, if we were to take significantly more claims in-house. So this is really proposing that we would. Have this money to adequately fund our outside council budget instead of partially funding it, because that's kind of what the history, I think, would be showing right now, their current funding. I'd be happy to stand for any questions on that specifically, if you have them. Now I'll move on to our. Additional slides here. You can see this is showing our twenty twenty three revised budget compared with our twenty twenty four requested budget. There are some things, and this will probably be something you guys see in in other departmental budgets. For example, personnel's gone down, I think, because of the twenty seven pay periods down to the twenty six pay periods. The contractuals are proposed to be significantly less. That's in part because of the outside council expenditures that we've had to add to our twenty twenty three existing budget that are not yet in a twenty twenty four requested budget. So there are some differences there. This next slide here shows. Some of those, the differences in the overall budget, and we're requesting less than what the twenty twenty three revised budget is, that's in part because of the outside council costs that I referenced already. With that, commissioners, I would be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to make sure I understand the outside council thing. Down in the box on bottom of page five talks about. Twenty four requests is two hundred and fifty thousand. That's lower than the twenty three revise. And you're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand plus a hundred and fifty thousand?
That's correct, Commissioner. I'm sorry, I didn't do a very good job explaining that, but yes.
So if we if we approve the decision package, it'd be four hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. That was mine. That was clarification.
Same person. All right, all right. Thank you very much, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Well, thanks, Justin. Thanks for all you guys do. Appreciate it. It's kind of unpredictable department. Ever know what's going to hit us.
Next, we'll have the Division of Information Technology. It's on page two forty six of your binders, and you'll be hearing from Mike Elpers.
Good afternoon, Mike.
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners. So I'm Mike Elpers with. With Sedgwick County IT, and today I'll be presenting the Division of Information Technologies twenty twenty four budget request. But first, a little information and background of our division. IT is made up of three departments with eleven programs. The first department listed here vertically on the left is our IT Infrastructure Department. With four programs, those are Security and Networking, System Administration and Telecommunications, Help Desk and Director's Office, which is our two admin positions. This time, that department is fully staffed with twenty eight point five FTEs. The second department listed in the middle is our Enterprise Resource Planning or ERP Department. It contains eleven FTEs with one current vacancy in the area of Enterprise Financials. We're currently working to fill that position. And then the third department is the Business Solutions Group or BSG. Four programs here, including Geographic Information Services or GIS. Application Management, which currently has two positions vacant, both in the interview phase, by the way. And Application Development Team with eleven positions and two project managers for a total of thirty six full-time positions. We've had some good luck luck with staffing in these positions, only one separation this year, plus we had some internal promotions throughout the the division. And have obtained two additions to our staffing table over the past year, one from M A B C D and the other one from Corrections, both in the area of Application Management. Both positions are funded by those departments that send them to us, but those resources become part of a pool of IT resources. They report to an IT supervisor. And have their primary responsibilities in those areas, but it's better than better to have a pool of supported. Support people than it is to just have one out in that department. So those were the three departments, and these are the three directors of those departments. Thought I'd take just a brief moment to highlight them. They're also in the room with us here. Joe Courier leads the IT Infrastructure Team. And additionally acts as our Chief Information Security Officer. Joe's been with the county for eighteen years. Gina is our ERP Director and has been with the county for twenty three years. And finally, Greg Gann leads the Business Solutions Group Team. He's been with the county for twenty four years. So these three individuals make a combined sixty five years of experience with Sedgwick County. They work really well with each other and do an outstanding job leading and directing in their areas. Okay, so back to the division and focus on the services we deliver. Our strategic plan was last updated in October twenty twenty one, shortly after I became the CIO, and I feel like it's still very accurate. Detailing our approach to the services we provide. We have four strategic goals, the first of which is related to cybersecurity. We spend a lot of time, effort and money on protecting our network, our systems and our data. We frequently engage in audits with outside agencies to confirm and test that the layers of defense. That we maintain are working as they should, both from outside the network and from inside the network. Our software development team takes takes the time to learn and build solutions infused with security checks and best practices. And a hundred percent of our employees. Joyfully participate in end-user security training each year. Goal number two centers around making sure our internal systems and networks are up to date and ready to host or interface with the latest technologies in the industry. We maintain five-year projections of when technologies need to be replaced or updated. And work to partner with all county divisions, departments and programs to make sure their technology needs are being met and future technology. Technology initiatives initiatives are planned accordingly. Goal number three is all about our customers. So we strive to exceed expectations when it comes to timely resolution of technology issues and challenges they encounter. From resolving ninety percent of help desk calls while that customer is still on the phone. To achieving greater than a ninety five percent satisfactory rating on customer service survey results. Customer service is just a very important part of the services we deliver. We try to measure and monitor it as closely as we can. And recognize and celebrate IT employees when great customer services delivered. Our fourth and final strategic goal. Is making sure production technology systems are available and working optimally when our users need them. Our measures line up with industry standards of ninety nine point five percent network uptime, server uptime, internet availability, telecom availability and application availability. We know no one notices when systems work like they should, but everybody notices when they don't. Okay, so now I'll move on to more of the budget portion of the presentation, giving more information about these departments and their numbers and requests for the three different departments. And we'll start with IT infrastructure. So there you see the four program areas I mentioned earlier that make up IT infrastructure. There are some outlier responsibilities in here like cabling specialist. And a part-time ID administrator, but for the core of IT infrastructure is is in these four program areas. Several opportunities and challenges exist in this area of technology, but as I said, our primary efforts center around cybersecurity. I mentioned Joe Courier, the Director of this Department, is also our CISO and leads a staff of four IT security personnel. They're constantly monitoring network traffic and the ever-changing attack methods which exist all around us. They oversee the several layers of defense we have in place to protect us. And test them both themselves and using trusted third-party advisors like the Department of Homeland Security CISA. Or Cyber Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency we worked with earlier this year. Also, with all the security systems we have in place, we know it's our end-users who are the primary target for attacks. Malicious emails and phishing attacks continue to increase, and as they say, it only takes one for an attack to be successful. We continually look for opportunities to improve our end-user security awareness and will continue to do so. As you probably know, software vendors licensing models are shifting from a perpetual model where we used to buy the software and own it. To a subscription or a lease type base of model. We like the way this new model adds some consistency to our annual spend. It typically is a little higher expense over, say, the course of five years, though, and can be challenging when vendors kind of force that licensing shift by offering no other models from which to choose. And then finally, we all love our technology, especially the folks in IT. And seeing the emergence of new types of technologies in the industry can be a big opportunity for our organization to increase efficiencies and or reduce costs. The latest wave of AI technology coming out will continue to grow. It'll be built into our web browsers, into our operating systems and into the applications which we acquire. This hopefully will provide some big benefits to our operations and the operations of our departments. Here you see the numbers for IT infrastructure is what we see changing in twenty twenty four versus this year. Just a small decrease in personnel. We shifted about thirty thousand in contractual budget authority. Into IT infrastructure and commodity should stay right at the current budget amount. So IT infrastructure is submitting one alternative reduction dealing with Cox Cable Television, and this requires a little bit of some explanation, so just bear with me a little bit. So IT manages all Cox Cable TV accounts for the organization, for the county. So if a department wants to get Cox Cable TV, they call Cox and Cox is going to say you have to talk to your IT department. So we manage and we maintain all those. When departments do come to us, we screen their requests for for against five different criteria. That have to be met or will deny their request. And for that, IT receives forty thousand dollars of budget authority to pay those bills throughout the year. Now Cox Cable TV, believe it or not, used to be free to us, used to be free to all public sector agencies. In twenty sixteen, though, Cox transitioned to a digital signal and required customers to rent a small digital tuner or DTA device. That cost every each connection about two dollars, two dollars per month. Cox is now, though, transitioning to a new digital solution called Contour, increasing those costs from two dollars a month to around eight dollars a month. This new install, the new installs require contour. So those established DTAs, those two dollar ones are kind of being phased out. But rather than asking for additional budget authority to cover that. Increase, IT is suggesting that those offices with Cox Cable just kind of cut the cord. And either move to a streaming service, which we not going to recommend. Relax, Joe, or an over-the-air service, right, which can be free. Now IT needs to work with those departments who wish to make that change. We got a streaming services are. Very complex. There's a lot of different ones with a lot of different variables. We need to know if that's going to choke a network, that kind of thing. But over the air service, we've got cabling people that can help run those cables and make those switches. We realize we may not be able to eliminate Cox Cable at all locations, but we know some can be eliminated and save the county a substantial amount of money. Here you see in twenty twenty two, I should say, we paid forty nine thousand, just over forty nine thousand. Of that, and I said we had a forty thousand dollar budget, so we went over that. This is those list of accounts. The twenty twenty two payment and the number of active devices we lease monthly. Of course, devices in the Ruffin Building were not part of the twenty twenty two billing. But you can see we pay just over four hundred and fifty a month for twenty two devices in Ruffin. So we anticipate about a fifty four hundred dollar increase in expense in twenty twenty three for this for for service to this building. We're wanting to get this annual amount back to forty thousand amount. In our budget or maybe even lower. So we plan to reengage apartments, relay those monthly costs and see if there are options for moving to a streaming service or an over-the-air service. Any questions? Well, let me just go on here. We'll finish up IT infrastructure. So IT infrastructure is submitting no decision package requests, just the one alternative reduction for ten K. And no revenue package requests. Any questions on this before I move on to the next department? So from IT infrastructure, we move to Enterprise Resource Planning or ERP. The county's ERP solution in place since two thousand and one is SAP. And the ERP department supports all SAP systems throughout the county. Thirty four servers and forty three systems make up the landscape containing mostly SAP systems, but also a couple of non-SAP systems. And keeping all these ERP systems up to date and running optimally is the day-to-day responsibility of ERP. As far as challenges and opportunities. Lindsay, care to guess what number one is? So ERP is currently working. On a large and complex project to migrate our on-premise financial systems. To a new SAP set of cloud financial systems. As the on-premise systems currently are currently in use are approaching end of life. You may have heard about the new SAP solution called SAP Business By Design, which is the target solution for the ERP project. But there's also a procurement solution called SAP Arriba being implemented and a few other systems to fully deliver the functionality we need out of an ERP financial solution. This is actually both a big challenge and a big opportunity for ERP. And for this organization, a challenge due to the complexities of public sector finance, but an opportunity to upgrade to a contemporary solution and not run our financials on a twenty-two-year-old system. Two-way text messaging is being considered for the SAP recruiting system maintained by ERP. You'll hear more about that in the TRB presentation next Tuesday. The current recruiting solution called SAP Success Factors has one-way text functionality, but two-way text functionality has been shown to increase candidate response rates. Help increase the number of qualified candidates and increase the speed of onboarding activities. Finally, within the next five years, ERP will have to deal with the SAP analytics systems in place. The SAP Business Warehouse that we run supports, that the ERP supports is. Getting really taxed both in terms of large amounts of data and the complex processing of that data. SAP does have an upgraded version of their business warehouse, so ERP is looking at that, if it's the best direction to go or what other options might exist. The business intelligence solution in place is not having any issues, but there are upgrades to be applied and some substantial configuration changes that have to be made before those upgrades can be completed. That one, like the financial system, is a project currently underway in ERP. Here's the twenty twenty four budget request for ERB, ERP with decreases in both personnel and contractual areas of the budget. And ERP is not submitting any decision package requests, alternative reduction requests or revenue package requests. The final IT department budget presentation is for the Business Solutions Group or BSG. There are the four program areas which make up BSG with thirty six full-time employees. BSG project management and application management challenges include a pretty long list of upcoming and ongoing projects. Some of these very, some of these are very large and require a lot of communication and coordination. A lot of effort recently devoted to the Sheriff and nine-one-one departments with the go-live of a new Sheriff Jail Management System in March. And the nine-one-one computer-aided dispatch and sheriff records management system, which went live on the eighteenth of last month. I was. I was able to witness some of that firsthand the week before go-live. A lot of the application managers met in the conference room, which was right outside my office. And devoted, just cleared their calendars for the week and devoted their time. During the evenings and not just application management, it was throughout IT. They really did an outstanding job. And I think. If you asked Laura and Colonel Pollock, they'd tell you the same. Just a fabulous group of people. Other large projects underway, though, include the Odyssey Project that you heard a little bit about the other day. For the state's new case management system scheduled to go live in August currently. Plus, our SharePoint E-line system upgraded this year, a new records management system for county fire. And a current RFP process for a new system for the District Attorney's Office scheduled to be implemented next year. There are a lot of other projects going on, too, that have recently either gone live or planning to go live soon or in that planning stage. A lot of work and some big challenges for BSG. You've heard me talk about the annual software maintenance and how that annual maintenance payment keeps our third-party applications updated throughout the year. Well, BSG's IT development. Well, B S. G.'s I T. Development, Application Management and G I. S. All have that responsibility for applications we build and maintain in house. So there are server operating systems that need to be updated, databases we install, and those need to be updated as well as the applications themselves that we have to work to keep updated. This is a lot of work for B S. G. And can be hard to accomplish with all the projects going on and keeping our support levels where they need to be. And finally, just like with I T. Infrastructure, software licensing, cost increases and licensing changes can be difficult to stay on top of. An example of this is the way Microsoft licenses its database solutions or its operating systems or its development tools. I mean, honestly, this seems to change about every three years. And B S. G. Has to stay on top of this and plan for those licensing changes, both in terms of costs and complexities. So here you see the areas of the B S. G. Budget for revised two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty four requested with the one point five percent increase in personnel and a five point eight decrease in contractuals and commodities is unchanged. No decision package requests, alternative reduction requests or revenue package requests submitted by B S. G. So we go to the division summary. So these are all the totals for the three departments within I T. As you can see, a two point one percent decrease overall in overall expense for two thousand twenty four. Here's the one alternative reduction request dealing with Cox Cable TV for ten thousand. And I'm happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Chairman Mike, that's a refreshing recap. I noticed in the difference you're adopted and revised for twenty three, what drives most of it is Technology Review Board. I want to make sure I fully understand that T R. B. And why that's not being calculated in twenty four. What's changing exactly?
So I believe Lorian can jump in if she likes, but but this is just the division.
Right.
And T R. B. Is outside of the division. It's not. It's for the whole organization. So T R. B. Handles requests for like this year for District Attorney, for Appraiser and all departments.
But it was in twenty three, it was included in their budget?
It will be for the recommended, but Mike will be presenting next week on all the T R. B. Projects for twenty four. And then I'll get incorporated for your recommended budget, so these numbers will change.
This is just the vision, infrastructure, all these things, and the T R. B. Will be addressed separately.
Yes.
Okay, good. Just like C I. P. Good enough. Thanks.
Typically, ongoing costs associated with T R. B. Projects, you know, like annual maintenance on the in the outer years of it after an implementation will be will come into an I T. Budget for those annual payments each year. An exception to that would be if the project is for fire or for a fund, a different fund that is outside of the general.
I just, I didn't know to expect a separate conversation, so that's good enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank all of your department. You have kept us out of trouble. When I was a case last week, we talked about counties that have lost their entire system and that shut down. Then they have to pay crypto or find a way to come in and resurrect their systems. I don't know what we never got to that point, but it's mainly because you all are watching every single day to make sure that 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 doesn't happen here because it'd be tragic here in Sedgley County with the number of employees we have and the number of citizens we're serving. It's bad enough in the smaller counties, but it'd be tragic here. So I just want to give you kudos. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman. This may be similar to Mr. Beatty's question. I'm not sure, but on your staff table, the very beginning, you said we had seventy nine point five F T. E. I guess we're now three altogether, so seventy six point five is our current count, but the twenty four budget request is still seventy five point five F T. Why is there a difference?
I believe that has to do with like the two positions that we added in the past year that are on our staffing table, but they're funded by a different department. So those that are funded by an outside department, that budget is not, it's not reflected as part of the I T. Budget.
All right. And then, and then again, that makes sense. So again, going through the the tables here and you get down to yeah, the Internet Services, B S. Business Solutions, all that news. Now, we mentioned earlier, like, for example, there's thirty six F T. E. And Business Solutions Group. But actually, in the Business Solutions Table here, it's zero because it's somewhere else.
Yes. So that's, and that's kind of confusing. So so in the four program areas that are associated with B S. G. G I. S. Application Management, Application Development and project management, those four programs are detailed in the pages after that.
Right.
Those that show a zero dollar amount and zero F T. E., those are cost centers that we had prior to two thousand twenty three that we've moved away from. They used to be structured. Our programs used to be structured in a way that was different from how we were doing business, how we were running the B S. G. Department as a whole. So you'll find in the budget book, you'll find the programs for G I. S. Application Management, Application Development and Project Management detailed out with those employee accounts.
I think that makes sense. But then, yes, I guess my final question, maybe this is part of the same question, I suppose it might be, but the twenty three revised and twenty four requested, I don't even see those in the book here. Those numbers appear to be different numbers here. Let me give you the example summary here, which slide, for example, on page two forty seven of the book here, slide number nine. Excuse me, slide seventeen on page nine. Twenty twenty three revises thirteen million, three hundred eleven thousand in the page two forty seven, the twenty three revises sixteen million, three hundred twenty two thousand. My goodness, again, maybe this is again restructuring where the numbers are in the budget book. I suppose that's all this is, but I would normally like to see his numbers lining up, line up.
Phone, let me, let me verify that. I might have to get with our budget analyst Carly and figure that out, but I can, I can get that.
And even let me, let me finish my question. Even on the twenty twenty four requested into page two forty seven is thirteen million, five hundred forty six thousand. On slide seventeen, it's thirteen million, thirty three thousand. So for some reason, they're not the same, but normally they, most of these presentations, they do line up.
Yeah.
For some reason, doesn't line up. I'm just maybe maybe there's a great, a great answer. I don't know.
I think, thanks, Charlie. The twenty three that sixteen million includes T R. B. And I think T R. B. Is not in this.
I understand that.
And then the the change in that thirteen million that we added in some costs of doing business packages.
So the slides, are they correct or is the budget book correct?
The book is correct.
So the slides are not updated?
I think it's. We added in some after the last set of hearings. I think that number just maybe just.
That number, just so I want to correct the slide if I wanted to, the number in the book, thirteen million, five hundred forty six thousand, thirty four dollars is what I should see on slide seventeen.
Yes, that's their total twenty four requests for now.
Okay. It's all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thanks.
Thank you, Chase.
Thanks for all you do.
Following the break.
We have a break until three o'clock.
Okay. We'll see everybody back at three o'clock.
Back with the Division of Public Works will be on page forty four of your binders. I'm gonna turn over to Lynn Packer.
After Lynn.
Good afternoon. Okay, the highlight of the afternoon, Public Works.
All right. We're gonna have to hear about mother's milk and all this.
I promise I will not. I thought about that yesterday, but I will not do that.
You're gonna say it. All right.
I will come up with a, I'm gonna come up with a better one. Give me a little time. I'll come up with a better one. Okay, so our public works strength. Overall, we're doing pretty well. However, as you can tell on the left hand side there, our highway operations continues to struggle. And that has continued. We are about in the same place we were last year this time. I'll start, since I just talked about that, I will go ahead and start with the Highway Department. Our biggest problem is really with operations. Those are going to be operators. Our guys who are at the yards, they're working on the roads and ditches and streams. That's where we're really hurting the most. As you can see, we're down about twenty employees. And out of seventy, when you count, you know, those are full time equivalents. I think the actual numbers like taking out seasonal employees seventeen. And those are seventeen employees that we do not have operating equipment, using tools and helping us get our daily work done. Yes, sir.
So is it pay? What is the issue why we're down so far? And the reason I ask is that the last time we had a township meeting, this was one of the issues they brought up to me is that we don't have enough staff in public work.
Absolutely. And I, that is a great segue into what I was just going to talk about. And our biggest challenge that we have is pay. Our operator ones after the ten percent raise we received last year, our operator ones are still at fourteen, twenty three. Those are our entry level operators that we bring in. We have been, we have not been able to hire any, maybe we bring in maybe one operator, one the last two years.
The general pay plan.
Yeah, we're on the general.
And you guys. Yeah, you haven't approved it yet. But Sheena, can you talk about?
So changes that when we. Yes. So changes that we would suggest for the general pay plan would have a direct impact on Lynn's department and the changes that we discussed with him that we would implement should see an increase in his staffing for wages.
Well, this is the second year in a row he briefed all these red boxes.
Yes.
At least I can remember that far back and maybe years more earlier years that I don't remember. I know that you briefed a couple, actually whoever briefed it last year. But when I start getting back from other people that are impacted by public works, it starts concerning me.
Yes. Last year, we presented a comparison with City Wichita Derby, Park City, Bel Air and their operators, and we were either anywhere from fifty cents to three, three and a half dollars short. Last year, we also met with all the South Central Counties and discovered and talking to their public works people that, and these are, we're by far South Central, we're the largest county. We were talking with some very small counties that are starting their operators out at eighteen plus dollars an hour and offering bonuses for sign on. We just can't compete with that. And so we will, we struggle. We know we're going to continue to struggle. We are hoping that with compensation this year that will help us eat away in some of those positions. We have made some recent hires lately, but it seems like every time we hire somebody, we lose two or we hire two and lose one. So it's a struggle going up and down.
This is mainly operators you're talking about here in this, but you're also short on engineers.
We are, and we're in a month, we're going to lose our traffic engineer who has over thirty years of experience. We have been unofficially been looking for that position already for a year. We're about to start advertising for that here probably next week. And we're going to do our best to get the word up northeast Kansas, down in Oklahoma and boost that position to see if we can get some some additional interest. Everyone we've talked to has just indicated that, you know, they they wouldn't look at the position until we were, unless we were talking like the very top of the pay plan and that they know that they would be stuck. I mean, they wouldn't even look at it from the top of the pay plan as it currently stands. So that is a, that is easily a six figure job. And it's, that's what they're being paid now at other places, and we just can't compete without.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Highway Department strategic goals. We have our first two strategic goals are doing with roadway and bridge conditions and what that takes to appropriately maintain that infrastructure. The third and fourth strategic plans deal with our customer service, mainly just trying to make sure that we are responding to web requests and phone calls that come in in a, within a business day, at least give it an initial look. And something that we've all discussed, all of our departments have discussed more lately, and that's leveraging outside funding, whether that be at the federal, state or even local level and trying to get grants and trying to just partner with agencies that can help us get our work done and help fund those projects. Opportunities and challenges for the next five year period, we've already discussed it. Our critical challenge really is recruitment and retain it, retention of employees. We, I won't continue to delve on that, but that is critical for us. Another challenge we have is basically the cost of doing business for us, the cost to do these projects, the labor, the materials. You've heard from Lindsay and you will hear from her again, local sales tax and is increased. And we are seeing more than expected, but it is not nearly covering the increase in costs we're seeing for construction projects. So therefore, moving forward right now, basically, we're going to be doing fewer projects each year. We just don't have the money to do the number of projects we've been doing. We'll still get work done and we'll, we'll, we'll get on the fires. But we just have fewer projects in the C I. P. Another opportunity and challenge again, great having the increased funding for the grants is wonderful. However, it's also, it's a double edged sword. I don't have the administrative people to go out and get these grants. And if I'm going to hire somebody, I gotta take out of the C I. P. And hire a consultant fifty to seventy five thousand dollars to go after one grant that may or may not come to fruition. That's a lot of money. And it's very difficult to spend the time to get these grants. And so we do our best to apply for as many grants as we can, but we are definitely limited with the resources we have.
The last one, Paul, maybe, and I don't know if you watched it. They had the idea where we could use A I. To help build our grants. Maybe we need to bring that briefing in.
Okay, so for the highways department, basically, there's a overall two percent increase in our budget request. The increase is due to an increase in the local sales tax revenue. As I noticed, there was a slight increase in that and that accounted for in a fund transfers a twenty five percent. And overall, two percent increase pretty much in line with revised two thousand twenty three. The highways department does not have any decision packages to offer this year. We've recognized compensation as a priority and therefore we are deferring to compensation. It's kind of like we've been talking about internally for a while now. It's great to have the equipment and tools, but it doesn't mean a whole lot if you don't have the people to use them. The, we do have two alternative reductions to offer. Again, in light of compensation being a priority. If it's deemed necessary, we are willing to forego four of our twelve seasonal mower positions. It's not a lot, but we have not been able, again, that's a very low paying job. It's a summer job for students, but when you're paying them thirteen dollars an hour and they can go to McDonald's and you know, Spangles and make fifteen dollars an hour for the summer. You know, and they don't have to travel out to Andale or, you know, out to Furly to go to work. That's what they're choosing. So last year, we filled one mower position out of twelve. The year before that, we filled three. We are doing much better this year. So we are hoping that things are turning around. Compensation did increase for two thousand twenty three. And we are seeing some college students that are interested in. We don't know if we're going to fill all the positions, but in the interest of filling our permanent full time employee positions, we are willing to forego some of those positions. The other alternate reduction we have is basically it's elimination of an equipment operator position. But what it really is, is a, it's a combined two positions into one. In two thousand twenty one, you approved a commercial, a C D. L. Program Manager for us. We have been unable to fill that. So the idea is we would combine an operator position, basically turn it into a truck driver position and a program manager so that they would be able to help the the yards whenever necessary, but also manage and oversee our training for C D. L.'s. Overall, for the Highway Department and wrapping up with no decision packages, we do have two reduction packages that are sixty five, almost sixty six thousand dollars. However, the nice part about that is that is a recurring expense year over year and not just a one year reduction. Our next department is going to be Stormwater. Our, uh, next department is going to be stormwater department. I do have our stormwater manager here, uh, Scott Lindaback. So if you have any questions, uh, I have all our department heads here to do that. The stormwater department overall is doing very well. They're missing one equipment operator. Uh, we're working, it's actually our, what we call an EO three, a senior operator. Um, we have not been able to fill that position for some time now. Um, and, uh, they, these are the guys that. These, they use the D eight dozers, the big, the big equipment. Uh, we, we can't bring somebody in that is learning equipment. They need to already know how to use it. And already have experience with using the bigger equipment, um, and we haven't been able to fill that one. So we're very fortunate. We're just down one right now. Our strategic goals in stormwater, uh, uh, the focus are around infrastructure protection. By keeping our water courses free of obstructions and flood protection. And we do that through support of the, uh, flood control system, the Wichita, uh, Central County, uh, flood control system. The third strategic goal for, uh, stormwater is protection of the environment through compliance with the stormwater permits, our MS four permits. Opportunities, challenges over the next five years. Uh, a big one is, uh, a, a challenge for us is, uh, flood control is just going through, uh, incredible increases. Uh, we saw it last year with, um, increases with the city did with their labor costs. Um, and then also, uh, all the repump stations are, are obviously have utilities attached to them. Utilities have gone up significantly. So that is, um, we work very closely with the city to try to anticipate those costs. But each year they're coming back year over year with additional costs, uh, just for utilities and labor. Uh, another challenge, uh, we're facing, uh, is our, our big projects. Right now, our, uh, our CIP project for twenty twenty-four is flat at seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, but coming up on the horizon, we have some major projects that's gonna push that up to one point six and one. Point four million dollars and given the cost of, of. Construction right, heavy construction right now, I don't see that turning around soon. So I do believe that, uh, next year and moving forward, we're going to see increased costs for those projects. We have some big ones that are coming up there that are due to maintain our certification. And, uh, even on those years, we don't have those big, uh, projects. They're just gonna continue to rise in, in, in cost. The, uh, storm drainer, storm drainage budget is, um. Has a, uh, increase overall of, uh, or a decrease overall thirty-five percent. Uh, it's a little, uh, explanation is required there. It's not any kind of a cut that's going on. You will notice that our interfund transfers, that one point three million dollars is CIP projects from twenty twenty-three. We do not have everything programmed for CIP yet. Uh, uh, so it is not reflected in this. I do not believe we have a CIP pro, a major CIP project. Uh, for twenty twenty-four that's gonna eat up a lot of that. So that looks like a huge cut right there. Um, also, um, we have, uh, an increase in funds in our contractuals. And again, uh, that ten point four percent has to do with the increase in, in labor and utility costs that are going on, uh, associated with flood control. In keeping with the theme for the division, uh, uh, stormwater does not have any, uh, decision package requests or reductions. Our next department is noxious weeds. Uh, that is headed up by Mark Furry, um, our director of noxious weeds. Uh, he has a five and a half person, uh, six-person, uh, department that, um, currently is, uh. Doing the best of all of us. He, he is currently filled up now. He wasn't last year, but we are now. Um. Noxious weed strategic plan, uh, centers around education and compliance. Try to educate people on, um, methods to control noxious weeds as well as, um. Uh, compliance with state law and eradicating them. The, uh, third strategic goal is treatment of, uh, properties that are affected with those, uh, are infected with the noxious weeds. And, uh, you will find this, uh, something is very strong with us in public works is partnerships. Uh, we have very good partnerships in our local cities and KDOT, the state and feds. Um, and that is no difference with noxious weeds. Uh, we work on the, sorry, we work on, um. Contracts with, with the state to help maintain their, uh, uh, noxious weeds control, uh, utilizing our forces and they reverses for those costs. Challenges for the next five years and opportunities, uh, we have one of each, uh, for noxious weeds. Uh, the cot, if you guys have gone out and done any of your spring, uh, uh, yard work, yeah, you may have already noticed. Uh, grass and chemicals, the costs have just really increased. Um, and that is no different for us, even though, uh, we can cut out the middleman where we buy it and buy it direct. It's still an increase in costs. Um, and, um, yeah, that's a large part of that is supply chain issues. Uh, an opportunity that we do have in that department is new mapping software, um, that is helping us be basically more efficient. Uh, we know where our hotspots are. Our operators can go out there, uh, with their, uh, handhelds and they, they, they can realize, they know where they've sprayed. Where they need to, where they need to look to find out if we're still having infestations. Um, and that, um, we, we've tried. Different software. We think we're on to something that's working well for us. And, uh, hopefully, um, you know, we can track from year to year, uh, um. And, uh, we, most importantly, we know not only where we need to improve, but also where it's working and we're, you know, continue those processes. Uh, the noxious weed budget request overall, um, is again, I know a little, it's. Looks great because it's almost a sixteen percent reduction, but requires a little explanation. Uh, you may require, uh, a change in state, I believe, a state law that, uh, allowed us to move their funds over to the general fund. And that's basically what you're seeing with that reduction in interfund transfers. Um, as well as, um, we have, um, made our final payment of admin fees, uh, from the noxious weeds fund. So that contributes to the reduction overall. Otherwise, it's pretty flat with last year's budget. Again, uh, noxious weeds is following in line with the rest of public works, does not have any, uh, decision packages or, uh, reductions. And our last and final department, uh, by no means least is environmental resources. Uh, Susan Earlwine is back there. You're all very familiar with Susan. Uh, she is actually doing overall very well, uh, this year. Uh, she's down one employee, um, in house and hazardous waste, and we actually are hoping to have that filled up by the summer. Um. Uh, goals for the environmental resources department include, uh, community education by, uh. Offering special waste management station projects and something we're all very familiar with. And that's our HHW disposal, uh, uh, options each year where we go out and, and go into the community and, and often, and basically. Go to them to be able to collect, uh, those hazardous wastes. Uh, also, uh, we seek to improve water resources by improving water quality and quantity, um, within the, the county. The, uh. Environmental awareness, we basically are looking to increase environmental awareness through research, environmental assessments and consult consultations. And, uh, partnerships, uh, we have, again, like I said, we're very strong with our partnerships, uh, both, uh, in environmental resources can, uh. Particular, uh, partnerships include nonprofits, businesses, state, local governments, uh, and, and, uh, working with them. Uh, to achieve all of our goals, um. The challenges and opportunities over the next five years is, uh. Actually, a big one, we have again, uh, for, uh, environmental resources. I'll go into details here in a minute, but, uh, we're gonna see an increase in, in costs with hazardous waste, uh, removal. Um, right now, we're anticipating about a twenty percent increase in that cost for twenty twenty-four. Uh, another challenge we have is, uh. You guys know, we just had the. Uh, waste tire events. Um, we have this year implemented with your guidance, um, s- some restrictions. Uh, we're still trying to figure out if that's gonna result in more illegal dumping. Um, it definitely, um. Was not, uh, adhered to very well. Uh, we had a lot of people that, uh, misunderstood what the event was for, bringing in electronics or just general weight, general waste. Uh, but also, uh, um. Just not understanding that, uh, they couldn't come in and break twenty trucks of tire, of tires to, to drop off. Uh, the opportunity that we do have, uh, is new equipment at HHW. Uh, we've shown, we talked about this a little bit last year, but we've shown that by investing in some equipment, uh, we can actually reduce our overall costs. Um, we have two pieces of equipment right now that is allowing us to, um. Greatly reduced. They, they usually pay for themselves, um, if not in the first year, by the second year, they're paying for themselves. With the expansion of the, uh, HHW here, hopefully in the next year or so, we're hoping to buy more equipment that will again. Allow us to reduce our costs overall with, um, getting rid of those hazardous wastes. Uh, the overall, uh, budget, uh, for, uh, twenty twenty-four is, um, mainly flat with the revised twenty twenty-three. Uh, we do have a two percent decrease, um, but like I said, overall, i- it's in line with, uh, what we're asking for this year. As I talked about, we have a big challenge, uh, that big challenge is, um, disposal costs. Uh, we do have a decision package within, um, environmental resources. However, the funds would not be covered through the general fund. We're proposing to cover them through a slight increase in the solid waste fee. Um, right now, we have a vendor onboard that is, um. Not working out very well for us, has made a lot of increases, uh, in above contract, uh, our contract, uh, and builders for those. Uh, we are going to be seeking a new vendor. Uh, we do expect overall, though, even with a new vendor that. Like I said, we're gonna see about a twenty percent increase in cost over what we've paid in the past. Um. You guys, I, I'm sure you're gonna hear it from all the divisions, increase of costs just going around. Um, the ask is for a two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, no effect on employment. Um, and, uh, it is basically, uh, the understanding is. We can only hold on when people bring us those hazardous wastes. We have a limited amount of time. We can hold on to that before we need to have it properly disposed of, and that is state law. So, um. If we don't in, pay for this, uh, somebody to come in and, and properly dispose of this. We're, we're facing potential of limiting the hours of noxious weeds or not being able to take in, uh, as much as we have been taking in. Um, uh, from the, the citizens. So, um, it, it's, it's important. And that's why we were proposing to cover that with a solid way, an increase in the solid waste fee. So we can get a new vendor onboard and not have to make any reductions in hours or services. The, uh, as I said, they have one decision package for two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, no other reductions. Uh, the. Division summary as a whole is, uh, pretty flat. It's in line with twenty twenty-three revised. Uh, overall, it's about a two point four percent reduction. Our division summary is the one, uh, decision package in environmental resources. With highways offering up two alternative reductions, um, which include a two point two FTE reduction. Um, if that's deemed necessary, uh, to help us with compensation, uh, overall. And that is our department. Any questions? I do have all three department heads here if there are any questions.
Thank you, uh, good presentation. Thank you, Mr. Sherman, for a chance to speak, um. This one, I don't know if you want to bring these up every time I see one of these, but. Another typo, I think, in the numbers on the summary on page eighteen, slide thirty-six, the storm drainage. I'm sure it's not Scott Lindaback's fault, but, uh. He is, he's perfect factor. He's like Jesus. No, he's, yeah, I know, but anyway, I know the numbers don't match. It's off of by a hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That lowers the, uh, the, uh, change down to one point nine-two percent minus. Um, me personally, I would rather see us slow down our special projects. And not see an increase in solid waste fee. I, I know that we plan and probably do more projects in twenty-four. I'd say. Maybe not quite as often do when we have the money. But maybe not increase this always fee. And then, uh, one more thing, I, I've been talking about this for a long time. I think we need to solve the problem. Uh, people are willing to donate to things they believe in. If you. If we, if we were to take donations at some of these events, whether it be HHW. Or a special project event, if we could take donations at those events, I think we'd see a huge. Amount of revenue we're not even tapping right now. For example, say, say someone drops off some paint, they don't have to do with it. They don't want to. Pour down the sink or whatever, put in the trash. They want to take it down to HHW, great. If he is, if he just made a suggestion and said, you know, every time you drop off, uh. A gallon of paint, you know, costs taxpayers, you know, you know, seventy-five cents to dispose of that or whatever. If they know that, they might be willing to cover the cost by making a donation, a suggested donation. That not required. But if we could just somehow solve the cash problem. And you think. Uh, maybe use Venmo. I don't know, solve it.
So, um, Commissioner, we actually checked with our auditors on that. Um, following the conversations that we've had about this in the past, and they've actually told us that that's a, a, a practice they would highly discourage. For a lot of reasons. And so Carly is putting together a white paper for you. And we will articulate those reasons, but I just want you to know, we actually have investigated that. Uh, we've just been counseled that that's not.
Even if it was a digital donation?
And I'll, and I'll, we'll fill you in on those rationales here before long, but I just wanted to let you know we're not, we are attempting to address that.
Okay, I'll, I'm looking forward to the, uh, answer of that one, but, uh. All right, thank you.
Again, I'm concerned about our tire disposal. This last time we had, uh, some significant issues, uh, of people coming out there regarding tires. But I don't know what we're gonna have to do in order to. To make this run smoother, to let the public know that, that, that we're gonna limit to the number of tires that you can bring out there, that it's not for businesses. Uh, because they're already getting money, uh, where you change tires. So for us taking them just increases their profit margin and, and decreases, uh, the amount of money that we have available. We need to come up with a different model on how that we do the tire disposal. It's just not working.
We definitely have challenges.
Hey, Mills, got a question? Thanks. Appreciate all the stuff that you're, uh. Your department's a little more visible than, than some of the other departments. So thank you for. For all you do and thank all your staff. We're gonna take a, another three or five-minute break because Commissioner Beatty wanted some cookies and coffee.
Unfortunately, they all retired around the same time. So we're in the process of hiring up and just shoring up some of our divisions. So we have four divisions. You see that two of them are a hundred percent staff. Uh, one of them is at eighty percent. And advanced plans is at fifty percent. And we've got some changes that I anticipate will be taking place in advanced plans. They do most of our long range neighborhood plan. Hopefully with those changes, you'll hear some some much better news next year. So focusing on that. Oh, and on current plans, I'm happy to say that that one position, we're actually doing an in-person interview tomorrow for that. So we'll talk more about the implications for that. So in terms of uh what we do, well, we do uh strategic planning. Uh, we do land use, we do subdivision activities. So you see me there for the meetings on zoning, conditional uses, also subdivision in terms of plating, how property gets laid out and divided up. Uh, we do the civic planning, so neighborhood plans, comprehensive plan. Uh, we've talked about the solar updates for the comprehensive plan, uh for the zoning code. Uh, we do zoning enforcement, and this is just for the city. However, uh J R also serves as the zoning administrator for the county as well. In terms of the way that we're structured, we're structured through an interlocal agreement between the city of Wichita and Cedro County. The way that we're funded according to that agreement is that we accept uh fees and permits, uh applications for, I mean, sorry, fees for applications and permits. And then we uh take fifty fifty contribution from the city and the county. So if one partner increases or lowers the amount, the other one matches. So um very cognizant of that. And then uh also our division of zoning enforcement. We, this is based on the agreement for forming M A B C D, that there's a county reimbursement for the zoning enforcement activity. So that one is a little bit unique in our department. In terms of county budget, this is where noxious weeds comes in. So uh we looked at the general fund, county general fund, we looked at the things that were funded out of that and where the planning department was on there. And you can see where number forty two, which is highlighted, were right above noxious weeds. So that's, that's kind of the synergy, the relationship there. Uh, in terms of our challenges and opportunities.
Lindsay, was it, was it required that they all go to presentation skills? It's so fun. Okay, all right.
With my car sales jacket. So um but in terms of cases, in terms of total case counts, you can see that we're on a a huge upswing, and that's been going on for a number of years. And I've got some more detailed statistics on that. So non-subdivision cases is what we're looking at here, and you can see what that consists of, that mainly zoning cases. So this year, so far, year to date, we're at a hundred and thirteen. You can see that last year we did two fourteen, which was almost our high for the last few years, but you can see that it's been increasing in a high volume. Now, what that means is we've started tracking these, uh the number of cases that are handled at a M A P C meeting. And you can see that twenty twenty three, which is the blue line, uh, we don't, we don't, we don't know when they're coming in. We don't set a maximum level on how many cases. You can see that it can vary quite dramatically up and down quite a bit. Um, and when it does, the thing that I get concerned about are these numbers down in the bottom corner. So the green one is our staff capacity and current plans to be able to process these cases and do the staff reports, go to the dab and the cab meetings and answer the phone calls. Our average per M A P C meeting has been eleven point three, so it's been slightly above that. And you can see that there are some meetings where it's been almost as high as twenty. I think we had seventeen cases. We have seventeen cases coming up on a future agenda. So when we get at seventeen cases and our ability for current plans to handle it is at ten, we've got to start doing other things to accomplish that. So we either have staff or additional hours. Uh, we have advanced plan staff who normally do the neighborhood plans and other functions come in, do the work on current plans, or we do temporary staffing, and that's a program option uh that we're gonna talk about, and I'm so appreciative that's been funded because we have Bill Longnecker, retired planner, in our office today, working on cases because of that level of cases we've got it. So. Yeah, sure.
Just, I I should know this, but what are you, uh, what's S U B in this slide presentation?
Subdivision, subdivision, so Platts. Okay, I know, great question. Um, I'm so used to using the acronyms. So this is subdivision cases. Now, what's interesting about this one is you've heard all about the housing situation and the need for additional housing. And you can see that we've done quite a few Platts in the last, since twenty eighteen, it's just been increasing and increasing. And in twenty twenty three, we're not on pace to meet what we did last year. But that's if you look at it just from raw Platts. If you look at the number of lots that have been created in those Platts, we are on pace to meet or exceed what we did last year. Because a subdivision can consist of one lot, it can be for like an industrial property where they just want to do one lot, or it can be a subdivision with, say, a hundred different lots in it. And so what we've seen so far this year has been a lot of residential lots. So it's not a lot of subdivisions that are being processed, but it's a lot of lots that are being created from this. And those require additional time and effort. It's more complex. There's just a lot more going on. Um, so this is the graph showing the number of cases. This one, we're sitting good in terms of our averages uh for the amount of cases that are taking place at M A P C. But the thing that I would highlight here, and you're gonna see it again in the presentation, is that the individual planner who's responsible for this, this is what he works on. This is, this is what he does. He is retiring at the beginning of next year. So that person that we're interviewing tomorrow, that position is key for us because that person is gonna learn from that individual before they retire. So our hope is to have a seamless transition into that position. Here's a map showing cases. So you can see that we've done uh planning cases. This is from twenty twenty two all across the county. And likewise, uh, this is the one from the city. So just so that you can see both of those maps. In terms of uh special topics, so there's a number of special topics that we're working on. Uh, solar zoning regulations is one. Nightclubs in the city is another one. Short-term rentals is another one that we continue to work on. So there's a number of code updates and changes because the code really should be kind of a living document that gets updated from time to time to reflect circumstances that are taking place in the community. Um, implementation and updates, we've not been as robust at this as I would hope to. Largely that reflects because our advanced plans division uh staffing situation. But I anticipate that next year, we're gonna really hit this one uh pretty well. The one at the bottom, College Hill, we are working on a college hill plan with funding that the city allocated last year. So just giving you a heads up on that.
There's been a land bank created in Wichita?
Yes, sir. I think it's been around for almost two years, since looking back at J R. I think that's about right. Um, and
Who manages the land?
It's the city of Wichita does. There's an advisory board that that serves for it, and I believe that they just acquired their first property, or they're in the process of doing that just recently. I think, I think they've got an explanation for that. Oh, they did their first, I I can speak with a little more certainty on this. They did their first presentation of an annual report to the city council just a couple of weeks ago. So maybe it's been about one year. And they had explanations about why uh they are just now starting to look at property. I think largely it's because they were deciding what geography to target and also because of the funding source the city has allocated for and programmed for it. So I think it's uh hard funding that they've been using. Okay, so now back to staffing. So in terms of the staffing environment, I mean, you've from all these presentations, I'm sure staffing has come up. It's a challenge. It's gonna be a long-term challenge, according to things that I've read. Um, we've, we've had one particular position that's been challenging for us is Stephen Banks. If you were familiar with him, who's our numbers and demographics guy, um, great guy, did a lot of work on projections. And one of the things that we've done is we were trying to hire for the same position. Well, in six months, we've not had anyone apply that we felt was a good candidate. And I think that we're gonna talk about what that means. The other thing too is that we talked to the private firms that submit cases and present cases to the M A P C. We know that they are very busy, and that creates competition for the skilled workforce that we're looking for. So I think where we're going is that, I know where we're going, is that it used to be that we had people with thirty years of experience, and we had a whole lot of them, and they were the experts at everything. I think where we're headed is that we're going to an era of redundancy, where we have staff that have less experience, uh, less expertise, but that we have the more staff so that we can give them double coverage on certain things, so that we've got redundancy. The other thing that we're going to is just with Stephen Banks' position, is I think we're going from an era of having specialists who are very niche oriented. So in this case, he didn't have a ray gun, but he was our demographics guy, and he was the only guy who did that. So we're going to more the Swiss Army knife model, where people can do multiple things. And so in this case, we would have a general list, but we would contract with W S U. They're already doing demographics work. Why have another person paying them to do the same thing? So. So here's our org chart again, because we're talking about positions. Uh, the orange ones are the ones that are currently vacant. You you can see this now in more detail. The yellow one there is the one that retirement that's coming up in twenty twenty four. Now, we've talked about our plans for recovering that. This is just the the same information in another chart, uh again, highlighting the important positions that have uh become vacant or are going to become vacant very soon. Okay, moving on to technologies. So right now, if you want to find information about a planning department case, you've got to contact the planning department. You either have to call us, you have to email us. And frankly, most people, you can look up your bank account online. Why can't you look up a planning case online? And that's something that we're working towards. The other thing too, it the challenge that we've got in addition to doing that is um also a case management. So our case management system enhances, it's functional, it works, maybe we need some tweaks to it. But the challenge that we've got is that for years, the planning department kind of, you didn't do such a good job of closing out cases. We have hundreds of cases that are open, and we're spending a significant amount of staff time trying to clean that up so that we can provide better and more robust information for everybody. So it's not that we're dedicating planners to work on that, but we've got admin staff who, as they have free time, we're having them go through and clean that up. Okay, so in terms of our department requests, so that's kind of the context in which we're operating. In terms of our request, so what we have here is you can see that our twenty twenty three revised is around seven hundred and sixty five. And I gotta tell you, I I hope that you see this as a huge bargain of value that we're providing to the community. So right above noxious weeds, just wanna this second thing is that in twenty twenty four, you can see that it increases to above, just a little above eight hundred thousand dollars. And that, what makes up for that six point seven percent increase is that uh it's growth in salaries and benefits. It's also a small growth in con- contractuals. And then also uh the way that the city of Wichita does the budgeting is that they also allocate additional funds for raises that will take place in twenty twenty four. Because we have staff that are not strictly on a calendar year, they're on their anniversary date of when they get hired. So that's what's represented in those numbers. With that, I'm gonna move on to the decision packages. Now, the first one, I, I have to say thank you so much, I don't have to, but I really want to say thank you so much. Because in prior years, you have uh programmed funding, authorized funding for this, and it's a huge benefit to us. This is the funding that we're using to have Bill Longnecker or other retired planners come in and help us out from time to time. Uh, it's set at seven thousand five hundred dollars from each entity for a total of fifteen thousand. And if we uh, so it's, it's been very, very helpful. Um, and like I said, it helps us out in those crunches when we have cases uh above what we think we can handle. So it's a conservative estimate that they would handle additional two. Right now, Bill's handling, I think he's got five vacation cases that he's taken off the plate for us, which is a big help. Okay, and I've got graphs in charge to go through about how many cases we have, but we've already, we've already gone through that. Second one is on office designs. Um, where, where we are right now in the Reagan building, it's a, it's a great space. Um, and there were some updates that were done to make it really functional for us. Where we are right now is that we are digitizing a lot of records. And my hope is that we can move those records up to the third floor where we have storage space. And that we can convert those storage areas into workspace for staff members. Because as it is right now, if we fill all of our positions, we will not have space to hire summer interns. Because we just won't have desks for them to work at. And we've looked at converting conference rooms or any other thing that we can do. Um, we can convert storage space right now, but there's no windows, it's not really a real, it's not a real great place to be working. So we're making things work, but it would sure be great to get some design.
You're asking the county for all of the fifteen thousand dollars, let's not hit half of it to the city?
You know, we went to the city and we talked about doing half and their response was, well, look at, they said, I think the county's responsible for that. So I'm bringing it up as a discussion point here today, I'm open to however it would be funded, but.
Do you all pay rent back to us or do you get that space free from the county or are we paying the whole bill?
As far as I'm aware, we get a great deal on that space because we don't pay rent.
So not only are we splitting the cost of uh M A P D equally. We're providing all of your services for free. And now, if you wanted to uh adjust the, the building, the county's going to take all of that too. I think that we need to go back and ask the city to renegotiate the contract. So I'd make a recommendation that we add that to, that's a future agenda. I don't, to renegotiate contract with City of Wichita. It is unfair to the county. The whole contract, renegotiate contract with City of Wichita on M A P D.
So we have a counselor here, but. We don't have a.
Counseling here, but I think we'd have to, if, if, if that's the will of the board to, that agreement went through the A G's office, as I recall. So I think we'd have to involve the A G's office as well, if anybody else.
Well, then how do we get the staff engaged so that we can start engaging the A G's office and the City of Wichita? I, I think they do a great job, I'm not taking anything away from M A T D, P D, though. Please don't take this as, as anything against what you do for us, but I don't think it's fair. To the county to take care of all of the expenses in the Reagan building, uh, to pay for half of the, like their uh services. When honestly, if you take a look at it, uh, we probably need a chart on how many are Sedgwick County and how many are city. I'll guarantee you that probably two to one city, Sedgwick County, all of ours are pretty important, thirty-three, I'd agree with that, but. It's a fairness issue, we, we split things like the maintaining the big ditch equally. Why aren't we not taking this equally?
Well, also, I, similar to what maybe before, let's make sure that all the council or all the commission members understand where, where, what would be the benefit, the, the cost benefit before.
Well, for example, WAMPO is now paying us rent for the use of the Reagan building.
Well, I don't know, I think we just need to understand it, especially if it's got some legal hurdles that, that are difficult, because I, I.
Ask the staff to do it, nothing will happen.
Okay, well, that's what I'd say, can you, let's just make sure that we all understand what, what we would, that we would agree, that would be a good move.
Well, that would be a decision of the entire group, but we're going to have to make a decision to even explore that. Till we know the answer, why, we can't make a decision.
I, I, I need to understand it further for sure, because I, I hear great feedback from the developers and the builders that uh they really are happy with today's model. And I don't, they maybe don't understand the cost, they, they really like the model and if it's going to disrupt anything, that, that would be the.
Again, I'm not trying to detract from what M A P D does for this region. I, I think you're doing a great job, I want to make sure that that's clear. I just think that the, the cost burden on the county is unequal.
I, I would just say, please, please don't foreclose on us, please keep the heat and the light going, lights going, we really appreciate the space.
Back up one slide, Scott.
Sure.
So can I go to the city manager and ask to pay half of fifteen thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, he needs to pay fifteen thousand, but again, they're paying zero for that facility. And we now negotiated something with WAMPO, we paid for it, so leave it. Why is M A P D not paying for half of the facility?
Well, I mean, so, I'm, I'm trying to understand the request here, because that's not imploding the fifty fifty model. If you want me to go back and inquire from the manager, if they pay half of this building design, this seventy-five hundred of this. And if they would consider paying rent in the future, that's a different ask, is that, is that what you're asking?
Good start.
Okay, all right, that we can.
Are you asking what, how much it's costing the county and then printing it after that? That was the.
I would think they should pay for half of the cost again. Operate that, so they're getting free I T, they're getting free electricity, they're getting free room and board.
Should I keep going? Okay.
Do you have any more fifteen thousand dollar space requests in there?
Um, no, but I do have some more really interesting, like the best requests. Oh, okay, maybe really good ones, okay. Um, office space, it's like, almost sounds like the office, but never mind. Um, so decision package number three is adjusting fees for inflation. Uh, we know that inflation is a, is a really robust topic right now. And uh we looked back at when was the last time that our fees were raised, and that was back in twenty eighteen. And since then, uh, just looking online to see what inflation has been like since then, uh, we've seen eighteen percent inflation. And so uh there's a couple of options on this one, we could raise the fees by ten percent, we could raise the fees by twenty percent. Um, we've modeled it as uh either way. And you'll see some estimates on how much that would be, but it's about like seventy-three thousand dollars if we raise them by twenty percent. It's uh obviously half of that if uh we raise it by ten percent. So want to, want to propose that idea um to, because if we don't keep uh up with inflation and cost. It means that the city and the county are providing a greater subsidy for the processing of cases.
Then fees that you're wanting to increase of fees that the developers pay.
That's right, thank you, yeah, good clarification, that is the fee that the applicants pay when they come in. Um, the fourth one, so uh this, it would be to fund a process to look at the parking minimums. And uh what, how they align or do not align and what, if there should be any changes to them, uh, to better align them with community goals. And in order to fund this, this would be twenty-five thousand from both the city and the county. And um I realize that the implications would largely be in the city because um that's where I think the parking ramifications are the greatest. And one thing that I would offer up to consider is that, my understanding, and what I would surmise to be true, is that Cedric County property taxes, that the majority of Cedric County property taxes. Come from improvements that are made on land in the city of Wichita. And so by being able to reduce the amount of parking that's required mandated, they don't have an option, they have to provide it. We can increase the amount of developable land and we can also increase the property taxes that can be collected using these same services. These are areas that are already served by police, fire, infrastructure, et cetera. So I'll, I'll talk you through a couple of those examples. So here's where it comes, becomes important, it's important in every situation, but in retail, I think especially. So in retail, we require one stall for every three hundred and thirty-three square feet. Up to, you can see that up to four hundred thousand square feet. But when you look at how, and this is again, City of Wichita standards. That it would require a three hundred foot, square foot stall. So we are requiring you to put in almost as much parking as you are putting in building. And when it comes to property taxes, there are two major categories on your property tax record that combined make up your property taxes. They are the property value and they are the improvement value. And so we, the planning department, are essentially telling you, you cannot use half of your property for improvements. You have to keep it essentially vacant, because the improvement values on a parking lot are close to nothing. And furthermore, not only is the county and the city missing out on the benefit of property taxes and the vibrancy that that would bring of having that developed and apartments and people and whatnot. The other thing that happens though is that it's a double whammy because we're providing services for that area. So we're providing the most expensive services, police, fire, infrastructure.
Scott, on that, are you still talking parking?
You betcha.
Okay.
I love to talk about parking. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, though.
Well, I'm, I recall years back when we worked together.
Yeah.
And uh about parking. And I agree with where you're going. My question is, what, do you really need a study to, to justify what you already know and you're presenting to get approved by the bodies of the city and the county?
Excellent question, and there are, there are three reasons why you hire a consultant. Number one is you don't have the time, number two, you don't have the, the information or the skill set, number three is you don't want to take the political heat. And part of the challenge with parking, that's hard, is that, yeah. Part of the problem, challenge with parking is that it's, people have this emotional reaction to it. And so I'm just a little bit tenuous about having staff go into it without having a consultant to help guide that process.
I, I think you're on the right track and, and I don't want to go down that rabbit hole, I think you could lean on uh Commissioner Beattie's. He understands parking and more commercial stuff than, than the rest of this, so maybe you talk and, and see. But I, I, your last slide explains everything to me.
That's.
Plus your history.
Well, thank you.
Your history, but anyway, I just saying, I, I guess if you need to justify a recommendation. Okay.
Well, Scott, what are the harms to doing what you're proposing to do, is there harms?
Um, the only, there, there's a couple of things that I could see happening. Number one is we gin up a huge conversation and the Wichita Eagle comments go mile long and people just, it just dies, right? I mean, I could, I could see people camping out at the M A P C meeting like, I want parking, you know? Um, personally, I don't see an issue with it, but sometimes it's, I can be out of sync with the community, so that's part of this process is to figure out. Is, am I in line with what the community wants, is this where the community wants to go?
We've actually had some conversations on this, he and I have, and, and where it really, the, where the rub is really in downtown development. Um, that's where the rub really begins to settle in. Everywhere else out of the downtown core, this is, would be a welcomed, particularly for those that are building new development, it would be absolutely welcomed. The rub gets into downtown, uh, but, but, but as you would say, and go ahead, I mean, there's not a whole lot of, go ahead.
Well, well, I think the other thing that comes from it is, okay, so one challenge could be ginning up uh a lot of public discussion that maybe we find out this isn't the right, you know, the right fit. Um, the other thing that would happen though is if it is the right fit, I think the, especially the City of Wichita, we need to be prepared to do more parking enforcement and parking management. Because they're going to have spillover parking likely that will occur. In addition to that, there may be other modes of transportation that will need to be enhanced in order to help get people around. So there's, it's a little bit of a complex situation, doesn't all happen at once, but I think it's a gradual thing, but you need to be thinking about it in order to plan it all out.
Well, Scott's got the equivalent of the doctoral thesis on parking. Yeah, he's.
Can you go, does the Schmidt district have any influence or any authority?
They do.
That's the bulk of the downtown?
Well, actually, what we find in downtown, downtown really is a parking challenge, but, but it's, it's one that's created by some different market factors. Because our zoning actually doesn't require you to install parking in C B D zoned areas, so not in downtown. But there's other factors that are driving it, and I think a lot of it is because we've got develop, developers and, and folks who are coming in who just, they don't have a lot of experience or a lot of trust right now in uh having reduced parking rates. So they're, they're gobbling up as much parking as they can. And then I think over time, they're going to find out they don't need as much and they can kind of let it go. Well, I've seen that happen with a number of developments as I managed the parking for the city uh just a few years ago. So I, I think that downtown is a little bit dynamic, but as we start to get outside of downtown, even in Delano, that's where most of our rezonings are taking place. Uh, it, it, the reason why in Delano, we're seeing a lot of rezoning take place is because they want C B D zoning so they can get away from the parking requirement.
Oh, I get it.
Yep.
We've got a parking lot there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Well.
Don't do, you know, it's great for you.
Well, I, I would love to talk about parking all day, but. No, it's, no, it's great questions, but I'll just tell you that this slide is to illustrate, you know, the comparison of building ratio to parking lots. Um, uh, this one is a case that we actually had where it was an old historic building. It looks pretty cool to me, you could do some really cool stuff with it. They had to come in front of the planning commission to ask for an exemption because they could not legally occupy the building. Because they didn't have enough parking and the ironic thing is you can see the on-street parking right out in front of it. So sometimes we get in front of our, you know, kind of get in our own way with uh parking. Number five, decision package number five is um at, to update our comprehensive plan, uh, just a couple of elements for it. And I, I guess I won't go through all the text, but uh these maps, we'd like to update these because when it comes to zoning cases, we're finding that sometimes it's a little bit out of sync. Uh, with where the M A P C is and their recommendations. Also, um, we have some text guidance for cases and it provides staff a good springboard for coming out with our recommendations. So uh some particularly challenging ones lately have been uh car lots, entertainment venues also. And then um development that's taking place along corridors that is not improved, uh, with dirt streets, duplexes and whatnot.
Yeah, this, I'm sorry, this isn't necessarily budget, but. Well, these urban growth area maps, who does the zone, the planning commission meetings if it falls into an urban growth area but not a city limit?
Yes, so if it's an urban growth area that's not the City of Wichita urban growth area, then uh the small cities have the opportunity to formally request to hear the case. We'll go and we'll ask them actually, if they want to hear it. Yeah, and it's for their planning commissions. Okay, um, I'm going to move right along, but I just want to highlight that this, this is an important one for us because it helps us to know that we're in sync with the community when we uh come forward with the staff recommendation on cases. So um in terms of the entire package, uh, here's what we're looking at, so you can see how the amounts add up and hopefully I got that number correct. Now, the revenue uh package request, I want to highlight that it's at seventy-three thousand dollars, that's a twenty percent increase. But also want to acknowledge that that revenue, remember, it would get split fifty fifty uh between the city and the county. So although it says, you know, it almost looks like it balances out, it's actually quite a little bit different, um, about half of that. So with that, any questions?
So just, thank you, Chairman, um, what it. Because you come in right below, right above noxious weeds.
Uh huh.
We're not talking about most of your money here, all the fee income that you're, you're taking in and uh. I mean, for example, it says here that you have um one of the front pages here, how many, you have uh twenty-five F T Es?
Uh, twenty.
Twenty, twenty point two five.
Twenty-five, yeah, point two five.
So their salaries are coming from this budget request, but we're at, so what is that total budget?
So the total budget is about two point three, I want to say. Um, and that's because we've got the fifty fifty match between the city and the county. We have the fees and then we also have the reimbursement that takes place for uh zoning enforcement. And if you give me just a moment, I'll look that up, what that is.
My preference would be that we would show the revenue, show the expenditure, they're taking these off the table here. We don't really have any oversight of what's going on here. And I, I have concern that this budget is basically not as transparent as I would like, I'm not seeing, there's no visibility of what's really going on.
Well, and so that's it, um, because of.
Well, and so that's because of the way it's structured. We write a, a check to the City of Wichita and they spend the money.
So, so who does have oversight over this? Again, what we're more budgeting right now is the, is the amount of money that's not coming in from fee. Cover these twenty, these twenty point two five employees. But who has oversight as to what's really going on there?
Well, I think the city is the managing partner, right? That's how the interlocal agreement. They show quite a bit. I don't know that it's that granular. But yes, there is a lot of detail about what's happening within the city's budget book. And Scott, I'll let you speak to.
Yeah, if it's helpful, they, they do it generally by category and are more than happy to read those off for you if that would be helpful.
We can talk later. I, I guess, you know, for our fifty percent, it'd be nice to say, here's the revenue that represents, well, actually to Commissioner Dennis's point earlier, actually, we're announcing the same question. I'm going to say probably not just a two to one, but it's more than, but it's three to one, maybe even more than that, four to one. Of county, unincorporated cases or cases outside the city of Wichita versus what's going on. Which of those maps you showed were, were, they, they indicate how many cases are inside of Wichita versus outside. So the fifty-fifty thing is obviously a good deal for the city and. I don't know what I'm, back to, someone mentioned the contract a minute ago. Do we even have a contract with them? I know M A B, M A P D, do we actually have a signed contract right now?
It's an interlocal agreement. So yes, it is not just approved between the city and the county. It's also been stamped by the Attorney General's office.
That was in limbo.
That's M A B C D.
Okay, thank you very much.
And that is contractual, yes.
And yet, you know, I think I'm also confused is M A B C D, they, they adjust their rates, their fees annually, I understand. Uh, but M A P D does not.
And M A B C D can actually change their rates, I mean, multiple times through the year if they choose.
They're monitoring their, their ending balances and that type of thing.
And if it helps Commissioner, one of the things we could maybe try to do is in our budget book page, maybe include a reference to where folks can find that City of Wichita information. I don't know that it would make sense for us to try and show those revenues coming into Sedgwick County as a part of our budget, because they're not our budget. But that doesn't mean we can't provide more detail on where to find that information. Or we can include a table of actuals. I think there's a lot of ways we can try to get what you're after. But I think showing budgeted revenues from M A P D doesn't make sense because we're not ever going to see those.
So who, who, who has authority to decide if twenty point two five F T Es is the right number for this department?
Would be a combination between you and, and the, the city council. And so I would imagine you would go between your city. Well, I think that's his base budget, right? The, the number he presented today is based on the number of F T Es that are currently included. To me, it's similar to like our, our base budget, our flat budget. They have a target, they meet, the city manager signs off on, and then there are these requests, which they don't call them decision packages. But they have a similar process for going and asking for additional funding over and above the base of what they do. And so that's, that's how you're being included in this, because if you don't sign off on it, then Tom will have a need to go and talk to the city manager. About why there's not that mutual agreement.
So because there's a lot of information that's not really included in this. I mean, there's a whole lot of information about the budget. You said, I'm at two point.
So our total in twenty twenty-three in the adopted budget is two point three.
And that's the total budget for the city and county together?
Total budget, everything together. Then that includes Cedric County, City of Wichita reimbursements, which is. The funding that comes from, for zoning enforcement from M A B C D. And also the charges for services, which are the fees that are collected.
Okay, let's, let's talk about the comprehensive plan for just a minute. So you show a negative twenty-five thousand dollars on your summary sheet. Please explain how do we not spend twenty-five thousand dollars on comprehensive plan update? I don't understand what that means. I mean, the, the, the very end, that summary page.
Oh, okay.
You show a negative twenty-five thousand dollars to the county. And what do you go right there?
Yes.
Negative twenty-five thousand, update the comprehensive plan.
Oh, I showed that, I showed these numbers as costs, so I showed them as negative. If, if I was supposed to show them otherwise, whoops, sorry. But, um, so I tried to show the costs as negative in the.
So total, we have a seventy-two thousand dollar cost to the county.
That's correct.
Okay. And last time we did, updated the comprehensive plan, that's like a three-year process. It was very long. It, it was a lot of meetings on that. Does that sound like the right number two?
That, that is not what we're proposing to do. So I appreciate that question. We would like to just look at two elements, which is locational guidelines, which is some text on a, like two, three pages in the comprehensive plan and also the two maps.
Okay. All right, good help. Let me see if I have any other questions here.
Scott, in the interlocal agreement, do you have any knowledge that if the city? If you, if a decision package gets approved by either budget, that it's an automatic fifty-fifty? Do you have any knowledge of that?
I don't, no, sir. I, I do know that. Yes, uh, so it creates a little bit of a, a question. So here's what's happened in the past, more recent past, is that if there's a project that the city solely funds, which there have been, for instance, the College Hill Plan. They will fund it out of a different fund than the planning department fund. Because if it hits the planning department fund, it would require a match from the county. And they recognize that it's primarily a city function, so they'll fund it. And so I would, I don't know if things could be accommodated in a similar fashion at the county. But if anything hits our, our fund, the planning department fund, it requires a local match. I mean, a match from both entities because it's fifty-fifty.
Not to belabor the fifteen thousand dollar, but if that is approved by the city, they have to pay half. They can't, they don't have discretion to say, well, that's the county's.
If, if it is approved, uh, they would have to be approved by both entities if it hits our fund. Yep. And that's been the rationale that if, if one entity says no to, to that match, then it's not approved. So I, I kind of run double hurdles here in terms of I've, I've got to have clearance from both.
It's all my questions. Thank you, Chairman. Thanks, Scott.
One quick question. Sure, how about your budget, okay?
Okay.
I think that all commissioners have had a visit from some people talking about tiny homes, at least I did. Like from the nods, everybody is, I don't know that there's anything in our, in our zoning regulations on tiny homes. Are you all looking at that or do you need additional money in order to stack something like that?
Well, it's an interesting question. I just got a phone call from a gentleman who has tiny homes or is doing development of tiny homes here in, in Wichita. And so I wasn't able to get in touch with him when I called him back. But, uh, you know, we have minimum lot size that you, uh, it has to be a minimum size in order to be developed on. There's opportunities to do custom zoning, which could allow you to do a development of tiny homes. But if you, if you want to do one, you're generally going to require action at the planning commission level. So now what the particular situation is, it's going to depend on the request and the property. But yeah, I, I'm, it, it's interesting to hear that you've been contacted by.
Well, as long as I've been on the commission and even now the M A P C, I only remember one case in the county on a tiny home and we actually passed it. I could see a whole lot of pushback, no matter where you try and locate it in the community. So it's going to be an interesting topic if you decide to look at that, change your zoning regulations that allow.
Yeah, there's, um, there's been discussion as part of the places for people about allowing for smaller lot size to allow for some of these kind of remnants and whatnot to be used. But I don't, it's not been specifically to address tiny homes, so I don't know that it would accommodate the size that they're looking at. So, but fortunately J R's taken some notes, so we'll, well, thanks for the heads up on that. Don't say this, do say that. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Hey, our final presentation today is culture and recreation on page six fifty-two of your binders. And Tim Kaufman will be presenting.
Right. Same thing here, speaker.
Correct. Absolutely. Very good. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Scott Newland is here to help present. When we modified the schedule a little bit, it didn't line up with Adam, so I'll cover the E P stuff for him as well. So. The, the division strength is good. We have one area where we're struggling significantly and that's parks, and I'll get to that in a little bit. But when we look at the division. Strategic goals, we've got three. These were developed when we were doing our strategic planning back in twenty nineteen. And number one is to collaborate with the public and private partners to support culture and recreation. Much of what we do in this budget is either with someone else or someone else doing it and we're funding that activity. The second goal was to develop a Cedric County Joint Communications Promotion Plan for events and activities. In twenty nineteen, this, when we had focus groups with people that worked in this particular space. This was a critical need that no one was addressing. And so we put it on our strategic plan. Over time, over the last couple of years, Visit Wichita has started to work on this. And my understanding now is that Visit Wichita has a very good calendar. So we'll take this off and we'll add something else for the. Goals for the division. And then to provide excellent park spaces and places for folks. Here we go. Here is our workforce strength at the parks. Very small department, so one vacancy makes a significant difference. I've got two major vacancies in that department. One is the park superintendent with the passing of Mark, and then we've got the assistant superintendent at Lake Afton. I am happy to report that I have twenty-four applicants for the park superintendent position. I've worked with both communications and H R to promote that. And so I've got a lot of responses. And a quick review tells me that at least a quarter to maybe a half are really qualified. So I think we'll have some good people to begin interviewing fairly quickly to see how that, how we can go to fill that.
What are you going to do with that house out there?
Well, we're waiting. Mark's family will be out of there by the end of next week. And so we're, we're going to go in and take a look at it and then we'll come up with some recommendations and we'll present them to you and we'll see where we want to go with it. In, in terms of goals for the Parks Department, fiscal responsibility is very important to them. They generate revenue in a couple of different ways. One is through rental camping spaces and shelters, both at Lake Afton and shelters at Sedgwick County Park. And then they've got a thriving retail operation at, at Lake Afton as well. And so being fiscally responsible is critical out there. We want to make sure that it's a welcoming environment at both locations and that people can enjoy their experiences there. Safety is one of those issues that we need to, we've enhanced our focus on that in recent months and we'll continue to do that. To make sure it's a safe, enjoyable environment for everyone. And then we want to help. With economic development. We know that we're competing with lots of other communities across the country. And we want to make sure that we have amenities that are attractive to new employees and folks to come. When we talk about an additional five thousand people coming, we want to make sure that we have offerings that are appealing to everyone. So that they want to make this their home as well. So in terms of. Challenges and opportunities. We're in the process of reviewing park rules because. Sometimes behaviors aren't what we're hoping for in terms of making that, the parks appealing to everyone. So we're, we're working on making some code changes. We'll bring those to you later this year. You, you'll see a revenue package. One of the things that we're going to do is try and use fees to modify behavior as well. So you'll see some changes upcoming on that. And then increased. Resources to help us do new amenities to make sure that we're meeting ADA requirements and adding new amenities and that sort of thing are important. And then staff development and staff training is always critical for us. In terms of opportunities, we want to continue to promote special events. We've got a big event coming up this summer with the concert out at Lake Afton, a multi, multi-day concert. That brings additional revenue and it creates opportunities for us to, to invest back into that park. And we will continue to work with other organizations, entities to promote. Activities jointly. And we're going to continue to take advantage of some of the new resources in the finance department in terms of grants to help us improve things out at Lake Afton as well. So in terms of that budget, it's basically a flat budget. You see that interfund transfer of six hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. That represents two different significant C I, C I P projects that we will do in twenty twenty-three. They're not in the twenty twenty-four budget, so we're going to renovate one of the shelters and renovate one of the restrooms out there. So that's the difference in twenty-three to twenty-four. We do have a revenue package. And it is to increase fees at Lake Afton. It's only been two years since we've conducted a fee, but those two years, we've seen tremendous inflation and that really impacts the operation of the parks. And so we would like to maintain our position where we're about in the middle of other similarly sized parks. For camping fees and we think that we can also help maybe modify some behaviors with an increase in fees as well. Another revenue package, we think that we can generate an additional ten thousand dollars with some changes in. The rate structure that we've got at Sedgwick County Park for shelter rental as well. We do not have five decision package requests like Scott just had. No alternative reductions. We do have those two revenue packages. And there's our total budget. And again, that reduction is tied primarily to those C I P projects. Any questions about parks?
Thank you, Chairman. Tim, you've been around for a bit with this stuff. We got our parks of. When was the last time I had functional consolidation conversations on parks with the City of Wichita? What was the stopgap with that?
We have. I guess it's probably been twelve to eighteen months since we started those conversations. And we've got bogged down in part with COVID and. Some of the complexities of joining two different things. We're still open to communicating with them about that. I'm working in terms of arts and culture, they're doing their own new strategic plan at the city and I'm working with them on that. And so we talk about different opportunities in that regard. I don't know if Tom wants to say.
That's, it was, we, the analysis on that was done literally during the year of COVID. It was bogged down from get-go. I, I think there somewhere in here is a better way to do business. But it's challenging when you have zoo, E P, botanical, independent boards, art museum. It gets tricky on how to, to manage those. We did have some spinoff. I think the groups get together and maybe Scott or somebody can address that when they come to the podium. But there is, there was some positive spinoff from that effort. But as far as the actual pull-off of merging and consolidation didn't happen. There was fuzziness on what it was going to do to budgets on both sides. So I think we worked through those and I, I'm not saying there's not a better way of doing business. In fact, I'm convinced there is, but it's going to require us understanding what that is and getting the board up to speed on that, so.
The fact that the city has a parks board complicates things as well, so. But we did, Tom mentioned, what, what we had, one of the things that we had talked about as we were having those consolidation discussions was. A leadership council where the executives of those various organizations met together and talked about opportunities as well. And they have done that, so that, that, those meetings are going on right now. And I think, I won't speak for Scott, but Adam's mentioned that he sees benefit in it as well. So I'm going to turn the clicker over to Scott.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. All right, so our workforce strength.
All right, so our workforce strength at the zoo is actually in pretty good shape. For especially the commissioners that are new, do want to highlight, we started presenting the slide a little differently last year. Just to have everybody recognize the fact that we do have the two separate entities kind of operating at the zoo, so. We do have some crossover in supervision on some of those employees, so. Obviously, everything to the left of the red line are all society positions. Everything to the right are are the county positions, so for our county employees, we're in a really good spot right now. Actually, the horticulture, we've got a couple of interviews happening this week, so I have no doubt those positions will be filled pretty quickly. Before I go off of this slide, I do definitely want to say a big thank you to not only commission but to HR. For the work that we've done over the last year, I can tell you the compensation analysis and then again, the the. Overall pay increase that employees saw a lot this year has really helped us solidify some of these positions. We told the horticulture staff today that the. Compensation package that you guys voted on yesterday had been approved and that went over just so well with them. So I think we're going to be able to retain a lot better in that section of of the zoo. It's always been a place of really high turnover for us, so that's that's really good. But we're in, we're in very good position, I feel, with with our workforce. If you look under the Director of Animal Care Education, that line. We really don't have a lot of turnover there in the animal care teams. And that just is a reflection of, I think, people really like working at Cedric County Zoo. They're passionate about what they do. They have a commitment to the. Animals they work with, they have a commitment to the community, so we really don't see a lot of turnover there. It's kind of in those first four boxes that we see the most of our our turnover, so. As far as strategic plan, we're pretty straightforward. We. Definitely number one goal is to always strive for excellence in animal care. And our goals are really to try to always look at ways that we can improve our animal care. Because our animals deserve it, our public deserves it, and it's just the the way modern zoos operate, so. But we've always put that as our. Pretty much our our number one. Goal that we we strive for. Community outreach. Definitely are looking at all types of ways that we could interact with the community even more. This weekend, we have our big Cinco de Mayo Festival coming up. We are expecting eight to nine thousand people there this weekend. So much so that we've actually hired a few more of our off-duty sheriff's officers to come out and work security. Because we, we know we're going to need it, so, but that's, it's a really good event. If you've never been out to the zoo for Cinco. It's it's a, it's a really good time. It's a lot of fun. One of the other kind of new collaborations and Tim kind of alluded to it, Adam and I are really getting together more frequently and trying to figure out. How we can benefit each other in ways that we ever, you know, we've never really done before. A great example of that is Adam has a film that they're looking to bring in for the theater. That is all about Jane Goodall and her work in conservation and things like that. Completely normal for a science center to bring in a program like that. But how can we help him promote that at our facility? Because it ties in exactly with what we are doing, so. We are looking at a lot of different opportunities as they come up to how Adam and I can kind of partner to strengthen. The offerings that either the zoo has or EP has and how do we get that message out to the community? So very excited about that. Revenue generation, as most of you know, last year we started a couple of new revenue. Streams at the zoo with the opening of Stingray Cove and then the Martha St. Buford Safari Express. We are seeing those paying off, and so we're already starting to look at what are the next things that we can do. To really be able to increase the revenue that we can bring. To the zoo, that does a few things. It obviously helps us continue to grow, but it also helps us keep our prices down. We realize that, you know, the price point at zoo is something that we have to keep an eye on. And so finding these other alternative revenue generating avenues will really help us do that. Infrastructure and repair is something that you'll hear me kind of talk about here in the next few slides. The inflation that's hitting us all has definitely affected some of the things that we're doing at the zoo. We are seeing pretty much every quote come back twenty to twenty-five percent higher than we expected. So when an AC unit goes down in our education building, we've been very surprised by the replacement cost of those things lately, so. It may be something going forward that I will be coming to this body to talk more about because it is going to be. Harder and harder for us to keep up the property moving forward at at the current rate that we have, so. Kind of our challenges and opportunities coming up, as I already mentioned, we're definitely looking for ways to always push our animal care. We do have our AZA accreditation coming up in twenty five, which sounds like a long way off, but it's absolutely not for us. We will start planning in July. We'll start having our own little internal mock inspections. We have five AZA inspectors that are on staff at Cedric that go to other zoos to do the inspections, so we utilize that team. To go through our zoo and kind of just see how they would score us, so that gives us a really good kind of head start on the accreditation process. We do know we've got a few things that we're going to have to address before then, nothing that's insurmountable. But these are all items that were actually highlighted in our strategic master plan that we shared with you when it came out in twenty eighteen. Compensation and horticulture, I said when we made the slide, we hadn't finished. The review process, but you can just ignore that bullet. That was solved by your actions this week and again, I just had a. Very excited and ecstatic. Department. Most interesting comment was we had a full-time person. That came up after me privately and said, so if part-timer and full-timers are now making the same rate. I could go to part-time and I think he's he's an older gentleman and he was just looking at, you know, hey, this might be a better time for me to move to a part-time. Position because, you know, he's kind of just working for for play money, so to speak, so. It's overall, though, it's been really well accepted and everybody was very, very excited today, so. As I mentioned, capital improvement, we know that as the zoo has grown. We just have more and more facilities out there that need upkeep and it is going to continue to be a challenge for us. We've got two buildings specifically. That are at the end of their operational lifespan. The Belt Building and the Coke Building are both issues that we're going to have to. Face in the next few years as to what we're going to do with them, how we're going to. Either make repairs or renovations or shut them down, so we'll be, you know. Evaluating those things, bringing some of those decisions to this group as we we decide what we're going to do. And then the last bullet is kind of the next big thing we're doing, which would be. We are in the process of assessing phase two of our latest master plan. We completed phase one with everything we really intended to do. And thankfully, we've taken about a year off, do not plan another major project or. Start talking to other donors, but we are to the point that we need to start making some of these decisions. So we started the process of looking at the feasibility. If you don't remember, phase two is. Addressing what we're going to do with the Belt Building. And how do giraffe and how do rhino and a few of those African species fit into our future and where do they go? So those are some of the questions we're starting to look at right now and gather kind of a plan for. You have probably heard, we have applied for one of the Sprint Grants. And our application for Sprint Grant has to do with phase two, so a lot of our decisions will come out with of whether or not we. Are awarded one of those grants, what amount we are awarded, so there'll be more to come on that. As far as a budget request, ours is pretty simple. We we didn't have any other increases or other decision packages presented this year. So what is reflected here is just the increase that I think you guys have already seen. If you aren't familiar, that the contractuals, the four hundred thousand, that is. CIP budget for repairs for the the facility. So that would be in the future, that would be the line that I may need to come back to this body and say. We need to increase here because we're we're falling behind, so, but for twenty four, we are, we are good with this amount. Any questions? All right, thank you. Yes, and it's just fun to work with Adam, so I I enjoy listening to that guy talk all day, so.
Well, it's it's fun to work with me too. I just, you know, ever since I've been a commissioner, I've been enamored with the idea that. I think the zoo funding should be formulaic. I've continued to say that over and over. And I don't want to create a controversy, but let's just understand. If if you use a percentage of the sales tax. Nineteen percent would generate almost exactly what you have last year. Based on the projection you just presented in your report, almost give you exactly the same amount that you're asking for next year. Interesting number, nineteen percent of our local sales tax revenue, if we allocated that towards the zoo, that's what it would be. That until until two thousand and one, you guys got one point three five nine mils. So happens that that's almost exactly the number that you got last year. Based on our assessed valuation and it'll give you almost exactly what you're asking for this year if you went back to the. Mill levy number, so again, I, there's two options on how you could go back to formulaic numbers. And either way, it ties to the economy, so if the economy does better, you do better, and if the economy. Flattens out, then we all have to turn our belts together. I'm not suggesting that the zoo gets any cuts, not at all. But up through two thousand and one, you guys have given up over over ten million dollars in funding. By not sticking with formulaic. Model, so we go to these these funding agreements that we've had over the years and unfortunately has not been good to the zoo. So I would be interested in having a discussion about a formulaic. Funding model for the zoo, just item of discussion and not suggesting I have a proposal today. But I think I think there ought to be a conversation between. Everybody that says before two thousand and one, it was pretty easy. Since then, it's been more challenging and I think that formulaic actually. Incentivizes everyone to do to do better, make this economy grow and I like the idea. So I'll just throw that out there. I actually actually also like the idea of culture and rec being tied to. The fifty percent of local sales tax. I think the idea that. We're using property taxes for things like, you know. Culture and rec is a little more difficult to 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 talk about. It's a little easier with sales tax and so I like the idea of the sales tax model personally. Again, my suggestion, this is a proposal today, but I do think. If you're not aware of the discussion, please. Understand, I've been asking about this for a number of years. And I get misrepresented as I'm trying to cut the zoo, that's not at all what I'm trying to do here. I am trying to kick the politics out of zoo funding and tie it to something that says, just like WSU, we just calculate the number and write them a check.
Right.
You know, we don't need a debate. You know, our our individual love for elephants and things like that. I think we all love elephants. You know, but the end of the day, it would be nice to have something that's that's formulaic, so you guys can know what's going on. I just think it's something we have to talk about.
Yep, and actually, I I'm very open to have those conversations. We we have been talking about it internally. We've been having lots of discussions of. How do we move forward? Because we know our current model, it's it's tough for us to constantly come with our hand out when we're going up against. Noxious weeds and fire comed skin, but we, it's definitely something that we would entertain.
I wouldn't do this for, I wouldn't do this for a lot of other things in the county, but I think the zoo is special. And I think that, again, we had a special relationship with the zoo until two thousand and one. So it worked pretty good then, and again, if you go back and look at what you guys have given up, it has not been good to the zoo. The end of the day, I I think the formulaic model actually would benefit the zoo over time. And I think it makes it less political and it gives you guys more. Assurance of what you can expect going forward and there's a lot of good reasons why. I think we ought to at least consider the idea once again. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll make a comment on that. Now, I would like the zoo board to weigh in on this because I know the zoo board. Is a little wary of us feeding the county without a contract with the county guaranteed. And if we go to a different formula, then there's not a guarantee. So I just want to make sure that we talk with the zoo board first before we make any kind of decisions from this.
And if we do increase the zoo's budget by however much, then how much is that taking away from our department? So I think we have to be really careful in how we have this conversation because. That's great, the zoo would get more, but where are we going to make cuts? Because I'm not comfortable making cuts to other departments either, so.
My favorite response, I I think that the. The tied to something that's outside the politics of the county commission, in my opinion, gives you more assurance. Our our retail sales tax revenue is not going to go to zero suddenly. That's never going to happen, or our property tax values are not going to go to zero, so it's just, it's just not possible. So the end of the day, you know, these are things that are very stable in in an economy. In fact, you might say the. Sales tax has more dynamic response to the economy from. What we see inflation right now in the the interest rates right now would certainly benefit the zoo. If it was a sales tax model, if we went into recession, that might change things, and so, you know, property tax might be more stable. Only one time in the last twenty years, am I correct? Only one time in twenty years have property values dropped. Right, so twenty years, so in twenty years, and that was a very small, a very small reduction, like in two thousand and nine, I think it was. A very, very small reduction, but what's happened to value since then? And again, if I calculate to one point three five nine mils on today's assessed value, it's almost exactly what you're asking for today with the increase, so. I I don't, the idea that this is somehow going to create uncertainty for the zoo, I think it is exactly the opposite. It creates certainty and to the to the concern about where you cut. Well, again, I think that. I think that we're committed to the zoo. I don't, I don't know. What happened in two thousand and ten and no, ten and eleven when we had cross-board cuts, did you guys? Cut the zoo at that point?
Yes, community partner agencies were cut back in that twenty twelve, twenty thirteen process.
And again, so if if for some reason we hit into, get into recession, that would happen naturally because your. calculation would force you guys to figure it out. I mean, that is, that would be on some some uncertainty, but. And again, if we're dealing with a recession, then you guys would have to also deal with that, but see, even back in two thousand and eight, nine, ten, you guys did it anyway. This county forced you to do it. They cut you guys, so I'm not. I'm not suggesting that you're not going to ebb and flow with the economy, you will, whether it comes from the county commission or comes from a calculation, either way. But the end of the day, I think it's just more stable and more. Less political and more certain for the zoo to depend on things that are stable in our own community.
Thank you.
Culture and rec community programs, I'm watching the clock, so real quick here. This slide right here, I think, is a perfect example of what Lindsay talked about earlier when she talked about flat budgets. This particular budget, the community programs budget, has been flat for probably twelve or fifteen years. With the exception of the increase for. TCAM related to their capital campaign. That was something that you agreed to at that point in time after a question from the TCAM board, so. This is, this will be a flat budget request going forward. We fund these programs again because of quality of life and quality of life is important to economic development.
The city of Wichita matches on.
Yes. That's my understanding. They've got a number of different, they have a, they charge admission and that sort of thing, so I'm not exactly sure their full. Funding plan, but I know they get contribution from the city as well.
Yeah, I'd like to know that number.
Any other questions about this budget? And then expiration place, this is their full workforce picture, but there's only one box on there that matters to me and that's the president box. Because that's the one county employee and it's full, it's at a hundred percent, so. Again, I I think like everybody else, lower co, uh, lower pay positions are harder to fill and to retain folks and he experiences that as well.
positions are harder to fill and to retain folks. And he experiences that as well. You can see their mission there. This is one of the two really great public private partnerships that we have in Sedgwick County. The zoo being the other one, but you can see the split there between county funding and, and their earned revenue and fundraising. They came very close to setting an attendance record in 2022. And the only year that was greater than that was their opening, their first year. So memberships are at an all time high. There, there's a lot of really good stuff going on at Expiration Place right now. Including outreach and new programs all across the state. As you know, the board was in to talk about their sometimes they've referred to it now as EP 2.0 and their expansion into their area, the area outside of the two award winning facilities. They want to continue to expand distance learning. They have a goal to be in all 105 counties within the next few years. They want to utilize that new, the new facility that they develop for new programming. And they want to increase their organizational capacity. Their challenges are like others, financial, particularly when you're thinking about a significant capital investment, the costs that are going on in that area are challenging, difficult to predict. They struggle with recruiting a little bit as well. And then in terms of opportunities, that 20 acre riverfront development is anticipated to drive a lot of different things for them, including membership. And they, they do a good job utilizing volunteers as well. Another flat request. Any questions about EP? Division summary, it's a flat request. Again, no decision package requests. No alternative reductions, but the two revenue packages.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to, to, I feel like I missed making one comment. I felt can you make since Scott's still here? I would never think the county commission would do this about in extremely lengthy discussions with the zoo board. The zoo board's in charge. You're not going to do anything without their total agreement. Okay? By the way, that 10 million, it's about 11 million now. But here's the interesting thing. The $6 million the county gave zoo for all the front end and the 5.3 million for elephants happened in 2015. Those two gifts from the county to the to the zoo actually made us even. If you go back to 1.359 mils, actually we're actually even Steven, but you would have had that money upfront to have to be stuck with the original model. It wouldn't have required additional funding request, you'd have had the money by right. So we are now even, but, but again, my point, I hope is understood. The zoo board is, is controlled what happens here. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim, for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay.
That's it. They will back at one o'clock tomorrow.
Okay. I just one quick comment is that some of these presentations are showing flat to even reduce expense or maybe increased revenues. I can just one quick question because we are getting because of the the value of the property tax, the property tax increased value. We get a lot of comments and say, well, where's your, you need to just cut stuff here or there. Rachel Howe does a nice job. And then we'll, where? I think so far we've had some presentations that, that show we can almost formulate in columns. These are the departments that are the plus or minus, just 1% or 42% as we get at during the quote budget process. Now I know compensation is maybe going to go up and maybe other departments are going to go up. But I think as people are asking us, I, we're not going to solve that tonight, but it just, my, my light bulb moment is that there is some education that we can do with the public with some of these departments. That's.
Well, and we'll, we'll cover that presentation we did in the first hour. And I think that may answer some of those questions too, and give you some good info.
Okay. Well, thanks, everybody. It's one minute till five. All right.